Ready to go? Okay. Good morning. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety is amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the City of Toronto is called to order. My name's Larry Clay, and I'll be chairing today's session. Panel members today are Peter Reed, Gary McKay, Nazila West, and Phil Gauch. And our Deputy Secretary Treasurer is Sabrina Salatino. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Nishnabeg, the Chipewa, the Hodnasone, and the Windat Peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis people. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. Committee of Adjustment public hearings are now conducted in a hybrid in-person and virtual format. Some applicants and participants will make their submissions in person, and others will participate virtually by electronic means through WebEx. The meetings are also streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel, and anyone wishing to view the hearing may watch on YouTube. Those who want to participate virtually and have registered in advance will be connecting with their computer or telephone and have the option of participating via video or audio only. When your item is called, you will be unmuted by the moderator. For both in-person and virtual participants, Committee of Adjustment staff will share presentations submitted in accordance with the written submission deadline. People attending in person today who want to receive a copy of the decision of the Committee on an application must first fill out a decision request card, and those participating virtually need to submit a written request for a decision by email. If you do not agree with the decision of the Committee, you may be able to appeal the decision to the Toronto local appeal body, or in some limited circumstances, to the Ontario Land Tribunal. However, the provincial government amended the Planning Act and generally removed rights of third parties to appeal Committee of Adjustment decisions. Only the applicant, the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, specified persons and public bodies are permitted to appeal decisions of the Committee. Appeal instructions are set at the bottom of the decision. Today, I'll call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired. When the Committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the Chair should they wish to speak to the Committee. The Committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the Committee, and I'll comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. Any presentation or other materials you wish to submit to the Committee must have been emailed in advance of the hearing. Staff and Committee members cannot accept new materials at the hearing. When addressing the Committee, please clearly state your name and address, and remember to confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first to make a presentation to the Committee; then individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Generally, we call first on speakers in the hearing room and then those participating through WebEx. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they've finished their presentation, and when all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent has an opportunity to rebut those issues raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are there any minutes to confirm?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and panel members. Yes, the minutes from the May seventh hearing are ready for adoption.
Okay, I will move adoption of those minutes. I have a second there. Peter, Mr. Reed, all in favor? Okay, those minutes are approved. Any declarations of interest in this morning's agenda, panel, staff? None? Any files to be closed?
Through you, Mr. Chair, see none.
And we have some deferral requests?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have one deferral request, item number ten, eight Dover Court Road, file number A zero two one one slash twenty-five T Y. We could probably deal with this item at this time.
Okay. All right. Item number ten is eight Dover Court Road. This is an application to permit a club within the existing mixed-use building and to change the total non-residential gross floor area permitted for specific uses without increasing the existing total non-residential gross area on-site. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, three photographs of subject property, a planning rationale from the agent, copy of two letters from, two response letters to the community from the agent, and a deferral request from the agent. We have staff reports from Metrolinks and Community Planning. There is a raft of correspondence with respect to this. I'm not going to read them all, and most of them are from Dover Court Road, the existing condo building. There are sixty-eight letters in opposition, twenty-two signature petition, and twelve letters of concern on this file.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. We also have two speakers online. Just checking to make sure there's no one here in person that wishes to speak to this item. See none? Okay, so we'll hear from the agent first regarding the request for deferral.
Okay, thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Saint-Luc-Champs, address is one five nine Bolsoe Street East. Yeah, I'm the agent on file for this application. So, we're seeking to defer all the letters of objection or concern are in relation to the club use for variance one. However, in speaking with staff and with people who have submitted letters, I recognize this is my misunderstanding with the intention behind the club use. We've tried to clarify that the intention is to permit a use similar to that of a fitness club or a gym, but I recognize under the former city of Toronto bylaw, there are no clear definitions that can be assigned to such permitted use, and a club was the best one. And so, that's kind of been the misunderstanding that we have, that a club is not a nightclub, and we're not seeking to permit a nightclub. So, we spoke to staff, and we got the report from staff last week, and they would like us to go through a more detailed zoning review and come to a resolution on how we can amend the application with a different definition of permitted use that relates to a gym or fitness use.
Okay, sir, thank you. Have you had any discussions with the particular, I guess, the owners in the condo building on this file?
Through the property management company for the building, we've communicated, well, sorry, well, they have told us the concerns residents have raised. We've uploaded a few letters of responses, and Asalala has emailed the resident group status of where we think stand and sort of the misunderstandings we've had. So, yes, we've communicated with them that this is kind of where we're at with the application, and that we will be seeking to amend this to...
All right, we'll take, I think, you know, depending on what the panel says, but it sounds like a public meeting or some sort of in-face session would be helpful for your application going forward. All right, we have a couple speakers?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we'll unmute the owner at eighty-one Dover Court Road, Fatima Silva.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just for, sorry, ma'am, just for the record, could we get your name and address, please? Hello? Did we lose her?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yep, that's great.
Sorry, I have, yeah, I think Belle has an outage, so I'm on my phone, luckily for, for Adam.
All right. Name and address, please, ma'am.
Fatima Silva, eighty-one Dover Court Road.
Okay, ma'am, we're not, I don't think, we're not going to be dealing with the merits of the application today. The agent has requested a deferral. All I'm really looking for from you today is whether you agree or not to the request for a deferral.
Oh, no, I agree. I agree.
Great.
Yeah, the definition of club needs to be more thoroughly investigated.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll now unmute Fortunato. I don't have an address for him.
Okay.
I am a member from, sorry, I'm forty-one Dover Court Road, Fortunato, Ontario, and I agree with the request to amend the, the application and clarify the meaning of club.
Great, thank you very much, sir. All right, that's it? Okay, back to, we don't need to go back to the agent, the request for a deferral. Peter?
Thanks, Chair. I think this is a reasonable request, and obviously, there's a lot of neighborhood concern about what club means, so I, I will move that we defer the application to allow a zoning review, but also, I'd suggest that the applicant communicate with the local community about the, the new or kind of revised proposal that comes out of this.
Okay, motion by Mr. Reed to approve the deferral, seconded by Mr. McKay, all in favor. Okay, you have your deferral. Thank you. All right, we return to the top of the agenda with item number one, which is eleven ninety-four Davenport Road. This is an application to construct a new one-story ancillary structure, car porch in the rear yard abutting the laneway. Committee has before a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and five photographs of the subject property.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the chair, or the agent online, no registered speakers for this item.
Okay. Good morning. Mr. Lee?
Hi, good morning.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Lei Shi from Marty Stone Design at thirty-one Kieran Ridge Crescent Scarborough.
Great, thanks very much. Panel, does anyone need a presentation on this? Seems fairly straightforward. Sir, we don't need a presentation today. We've read your application, we're familiar with the materials. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
No more, thank you, everyone.
Okay. Thank you. All right, who wants to take this one? Nazila?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would like to put forward a motion to approve this application with no condition.
Okay, motion by Ms. West to approve, seconded by Mr. McKay, all in favor. Okay, sir, you have your approval, thank you. Item number two. Four twelve Russell Hill Road. This is an application to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with an integral garage, a front driveway with a hammerhead turnaround, a walkway with stairs providing pedestrian access on the south side, a rear ground floor deck, cover deck, a rear second story deck, a rear third story balcony, and also to construct a new ancillary cabana and an in-ground swimming pool in the rear yard. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations revised, site plan, floor plans, and elevations received May sixteenth, covering letter from the agent, decision number, previous decision number affecting the subject property, an arborist report, and presentation materials from the agent. We have email correspondence from Transportation Review, Urban Forestry, and an advisory report from Urban Forestry, correspondence in interest from four ten and four fourteen Russell Hill Road.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online as well as one registered speaker online in interest.
Okay. Good morning, Mr. Pfeffer.
Good morning. I am Jim Pfeffer from ninety-five St. Clair Avenue West here in Toronto, Ontario. So, happy to be here today, and a couple of members of this panel have already seen this proposal in its prior form, so we were here in September of last year. I think at the time, the Chair had given a, had a pine that what we had proposed then was very much in keeping with the character of this neighborhood, but there were some concerns about the length. So, that being the case, we've taken a little bit over a meter off the length of the basement and the extension of the ground floor, and we've engaged in extensive conversations with the neighbors to either side, who, I believe it's a lawyer from the neighbors, who's basically here to say that we have reached an agreement in principle on, on what we've done. We've also come to an agreement with the neighbor behind, who was at thirty-five Dunlow, who was also in agreement with our prior proposal. So, briefly, I can just show you the presentation. So, the front of the building has not changed really substantially. If you take a look at the presentation that was sent in, there's the front rendering. And then, on the second page of the presentation, you can basically see side by side the proposal that the Committee saw in September on the right and our present proposal on the left. And highlighted in orange there, you can see the over a meter that's been chopped off both the ground floor and that basement extension. You can see the basement is now in line with that property to the north, and you can see that red outline of the balcony has been shrunk. And I'm not sure if I mentioned, part of our agreement with the neighbor, we did send in revised plans, which show air conditioning on the roof and privacy screening for the balcony, and we've agreed with the neighbors to ask this Committee that should you approve the variances, that you make, that you apply a condition that the decision be in accordance with those revised plans that we've submitted. So, if you go to the next page, you can see, this is a proposal directly across the street that this Committee approves last year, and you can see here, it's a shorter lot, but you can see that first story of this building immediately across the street is actually considerably longer than what we're proposing. You can see the second story is also longer than what we're proposing, so this is directly across the street in the Russell Hill context. And then, another proposal that was also approved by this Committee on Russell Hill Road, three thirty-six, is the next page, and you can see again, a much longer first story, a much longer second floor. In our booklet of supporting materials, we've got examples of any number of, you know, similarly substantial and similarly long buildings. We've got examples of variances in this neighborhood that are similar to what we're looking for, but, yeah, I think it's very clear. And if you maybe go to page six, I think this kind of gets to the heart of the matter. You can see how basically our second floor is actually in line with four fourteen to the north. There's parts of four fourteen which actually kind of stick out at the second floor level a little bit further back from what we've got. You can see our first story extension. On the right, you can see we're longer than four ten Russell Hill Road, but four ten has actually discussed, you know, putting a second story extension over that driveway platform that you see at the back and that first story building, so they could wind up being, you know, just as long as us, and we've said that, you know, if they want to do that, that's, that's part of what, you know, we see as being the character of this neighborhood. You know, I, I think it's pretty clear, you know, maybe, I could take any questions if you have any?
Okay, thank you, sir. I think we'll hold questions until we hear the speaker.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we'll unmute Matthew.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, members of the Committee. Just confirming that you can hear me, okay?
Yeah, we can. If you could just, for the record, your name and address, please, sir. Hello?
Hello?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, just fine. Name and address, please, sir.
Certainly. My name is Matthew Licatos Hayward, and for the record, my address is forty Temperance Street, Toronto, Ontario. Members of the Committee, I'm here on behalf of Tom Coughler and Glenn Christie. Tom, or sorry, Mr. Coughler is the owner of four ten Russell Hill Road, which is to the north of the, the subject property, and Glenn Christie, apology, sorry, Tom Coughler owns four fourteen Russell Hill, and Glenn Christie owns four ten Russell Hill, which is to the south of the property. I won't repeat everything that Mr. Mr. Pfeffer said, as our clients do, do not oppose the application. I do wish to thank him for his efforts to reach an agreement in principle with our clients. What I guess I would, would just add to, to Mr. Pfeffer's comments are that the revised plans that were submitted, as he had sort of said, show that the proposal does not extend beyond Mr. Coughler's property, and as part of that agreement in principle, it does also permit Mr. Christie to, in the future, potentially, or not permit, obviously, but confirms that, that the applicant will not object to any future extension off of Mr. Christie's property. I would add that the parties are in the process of finalizing minutes of settlement that also deal with other matters that, including construction impacts from a pre-construction and post-construction survey, certain landscaping treatment matters, such as trees that are shared along the property line, and, and other landscaping features, as well as general, what I would call, good neighbor requirements to ensure that neither Mr. Coughler nor Mr. Christie are harmed by the, or adversely impacted by the development proposal. As Mr. Pfeffer said, our clients are asking that the Committee impose two conditions should it, this application be approved, namely, that the proposed development shall be constructed substantially in accordance with the site plan and elevation drawings that are contained in the architectural drawings, and that all air conditioning units and other HVAC systems be installed on the roof of the proposed development. I am happy to answer any questions that the Committee may have, and those are my brief submissions. Thank you.
Okay, sir, thank you. I'm not sure we can deal with number two, but if the panel is so inclined, I think we could probably deal with number one. Any questions of the agent? Okay, thank you all. Let's take this into committee. Who wants to take this one? Phil?
Yeah, I had, I had a couple of questions coming into this, but they were answered by the agent about what had changed from the previous proposal, and also about the proposal from the neighbor, and it sounds like that's agreed to have this tied to plans, which I think is reasonable. And, yes, these are large variances, but yes, it is true that it's in keeping with many other homes on this particular street and in this area. For those reasons, I, I do believe it's minor, and I would move to approve it, subject to forestry condition two, and that it be constructed in substantial, substantially in accordance with the floor plans and elevations.
So, just to, we'll be clear, the revised plans received...
It would be site plan and elevation plans.
Oh, thank you.
And it's dated May sixteenth.
Right. Okay.
Thank you. As Madam Secretary Treasurer said, thank you.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Gauch to approve with that condition, seconded by Ms. West, all in favor. Okay, you have your approval, sir, and congratulations on discussions to come to a resolution of the issues. All right, we move on to item number three, which is twenty-four Douglas Crescent. This is an application to construct a new two-story detached dwelling with a front second story Juliet balcony, an east side covered porch, west side basement walkouts, and a rear ground floor terrace, and a rear in-ground swimming pool. Also, to construct a new rear one-story ancillary building, which is a detached garage abutting the Douglas Crescent. Committee has before a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, covering letter from the agent, and arborist report. There is email correspondence from Toronto Buildings and Transportation Review, staff reports from Community Planning and Ravine and Natural Feature Protection. There's advisory reports from Metrolinks and RNFP. We have correspondence in support from twenty-three Douglas Crescent. We have correspondence in interest from thirty-one Douglas Crescent, and correspondence in opposition from forty-two, two correspondence from forty-two Douglas Crescent, and twenty-two and forty-one Douglas Crescent.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the agent online. We have three registered speakers here in person and two registered speakers online.
Great, thank you. All right. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Name and address, please.
I'm the architect, Robert McCackee. Our office is at one sixty Pairs Avenue, Unit two one two, Toronto.
Great, thank you, sir. We have some people who want to speak to this item, so we'll need a presentation, please.
Of course. This proposal is to demolish the existing single-family home and construct an updated single-family home and detached rear yard garage. The proposed variances were not requested without consideration to what has been approved at the CVA in the past. We provided a PDF titled cover letter, which has a map of precedence with equal or greater variances. Since acquiring the property one year ago in May twenty twenty-four, Marlon Hilton, the owner of twenty-four Douglas Crescent, has demonstrated exceptional diligence in engaging with the neighbors. We have made some revisions to our drawings to reduce the concerns some neighbors had with our earlier design. However, we could not satisfy all of the concerns with our discussions, which we see in some of the letters of objection. Please, we've also provided, I think you might have combined them into one PDF, but in there, we've outlined a timeline of the consultation efforts that we've made with the neighborhood. We also consulted with the City of Toronto area planner, Laurie Sirdan, who has no concerns with the final design, and we, just recently, we saw the comments from forestry. We discussed this with our arborists, and they advised that they, they, they believe this is an inaccurate assessment from urban forestry. The little leaf linden tree that they're referring to will be in the overdig of the new home. It's point five meters away from the proposed rear foundation wall, which is permitted as a right. We're here to request eleven variances, and in our cover letter, which you probably looked through, we refer to either, well, building length, we've got precedence for, we're requesting nineteen point one. We see this at fourteen Douglas Crescent at nineteen meters, fifteen Governor's Road at twenty-six point nine meters. Front setback, this is a technical variance, because we have this really big curved front yard, and, I mean, it looks bad at two point one meters, but if you go look at our site plan, it's really just the geometry that we had to go back and forth with, the interpretation of what the front setback for a curved lot would be at the front, and that's how we have this number. The west side yard setback, I mean, we're going from permitted one point two to one point one meters. It's a really, we believe it's a pretty small, minor variance. Floor space index, going from point six, bumping it to six, point six-six. I mean, there's other area, other thirty-nine Douglas Crescent is at point eight-two-five. We think this is pretty marginal. Lot coverage permitted at thirty-five, we're going to points, sorry, forty-five, which is within keeping of across the street of thirty-nine Douglas Crescent, forty-three percent. Each side yard setback, from three meters to two point one meters. This aligns with the surrounding properties. We don't believe it has any adverse impacts, similar to existing condition. Twenty-six Governor's Road, which also has a two point one meter setback. Building height, nine point seven meters. I mean, at fifty-five Douglas Crescent, there's ten point one three meters. Well, just to keep going, because we're almost done. Platform encroachment permitted at one point five, and we're proposing two point six, but this is really coming from the reduced east side setback. Stair encroachment, we're going from permitted point six meters to point three meters. Again, this is from the porch, coming from the reduced east yard side setback. Proposed for the canopy encroachment, we're point three meters beyond the platform that it's covering. And really, finally, the one that brought some attention, we see from some of the letters, the east side setback of the garage. This is the distance from the garage, the rear garage, to the road. We, if you could refer to the cover letter, page seven, whoever's driving the, the screen, there's an image in there we wanted to, yeah, the lower image. You could make that a bit bigger. So, this is the garage proposed at the back, and so, we're requesting a setback of point three-five meters to match the... meters to match the setback of the house. And on the opposite corner, at 31 Governor's Road, we see that there's a similar setback. So that's on page five of the same document, and that's the opposite corner of this block. But...
Okay, sir, I'm just gonna ask you to draw your comments to a close, please.
That's pretty much it. We just, in this diagram, you can see here, the other corner, that red line, if you follow it up, that garage is even closer than what we're proposing.
Sir, you mentioned the report from urban forestry recommending refusal, and I thought I heard you say that that tree is in the as-of-right permitted foundation. Can you just elaborate that on for the panel and those people who are listening for a sec? You're saying that there's an error?
Well, what the forestry is referring to is, they're saying that we're proposing a pool, and that's gonna damage the tree or kill the tree that's there. But we're really, they haven't commented, or they've, they seem to have forgotten that there's a house being built. If you look at the site plan, you can see that the tree will be removed when we dig the foundation, and we're, we understand we're allowed to build that foundation for this home. So, yeah, if you zoom into that, there's a kind of a dot at the back of the house, and there's a drawing, a little arrow pointing to existing tree to be removed. Yeah, that one.
Okay, so, so you're not seeking a variance with respect to that extension of the house?
No, the rear yard setback, there's no variance for that.
Okay. All right, thank you. We can go to our first speaker.
Mr. Chair, we can hear from the owners at 42 Douglas Crescent. 42 Douglas Crescent.
Good morning. Ms. Gardner?
Are you here? Is, who's, no, you're not speaking? Okay, 22 Douglas Crescent? Yep.
Good morning. My name is Andrew Hainsworth, and with my wife, Sophie Legay, we live at 22 Douglas Crescent, which is next door to the subject property. We have a number of objections to the proposed redevelopment at 24 Douglas Crescent, as outlined in our letter to the committee last week. I would say, first is, we object to variance three, required 1.1 meter setback from the west side, and they're coming a little closer, as we're worried about the stability of our existing basement staircase wall during excavation. There are also gas lines, electrical slash water conduits, and sprinklers that are ours, including along the hedge, which is referred to as T11 between the two properties. So we're just very nervous about extensive excavation right along that side, both with respect to the sort of foundations of our house and the existing cedar hedge between the two properties, which are, is our hedge. We object to variance 11, the required six-meter setback for the garage versus the only three-and-a-half meters proposed. Essentially, 42 Douglas Crescent, the immediate neighbor on the other side of this house, has a setback of 7.46 meters from the street, and this adjacent garage will jut out nearly four meters, creating a large visual discrepancy along the streetscape, particularly as the proponent is proposing to move a large and mature cedar hedge between his property and 42 Douglas. The relevant precedents, I don't think really that the one he cites at 31 Governor's Road, which backs onto a property on Douglas Crescent, adjacent to 54 Douglas Crescent, it's much more integrated into the streetscape. It doesn't sort of jut out into the neighboring house. There are, there's space between it and the neighboring house, and it is much more tied into the, both the fence and the actual house at 31 Governor's. So I don't think it's a very valid precedent. We're also concerned about the garage proposed. I guess it's an ancillary building, so maybe it doesn't seem to require the setback on the west side of the property. But the proposed plans show the back of the garage only 0.3 of a meter from our property line. Yeah, you can see that on the picture on the screen at the top sort of right corner of that proposed garage. That, that back of the garage there is only 0.3 of a meter from our property line, and basically he's talking about putting a garage slab and foundation for that garage there, and that's gonna be right on top of roots of quite a large, mature cedar tree, which is referred to as T10, that is our tree, and it's effectively just inside the property line on our side. And I think urban forestry, we thought, might object to that, because if you start putting concrete slabs and helical piles and so on, and pruning aggressively roots of that large cedar tree, I think the tree is gonna be basically traumatized and probably not survive. And this tree does provide important greenery to the neighborhood, as well as a visual privacy between both our house and 42 Douglas, and between 24 Douglas and 42 Douglas. Finally, we object to variance five, which is really a catch-all in our minds, the lot coverage going up to 43.5%. It's just, feels that, is it excessive? And I think it ties back into your question, Mr. Chair, about the urban forestry. Did they make a mistake is cutting down this big linden tree that they want to do near their house foundation? I think it's the building length, it's the building density, there's a lot of variances that are indirectly impacting their proposal to cut that linden tree down. And it really removes existing greenery, including mature hedges, leads to potential tree and height injuries on our property. And, you know, the 2.1 extra meters of building length is sought means significant extra shadow as well over our house. I guess I would finally just say, you know, they knew the restrictions of the lot when it was bought. You know, it's a corner lot, it's obvious, nothing's changed. There's an existing house, which is within code and variance there. And I don't think the site, he cites 55 Douglas as having a height variant, but it's really at the back of the house and not apparent from the street.
Sir, I'm just gonna ask...
Thank you for your consideration.
Drop up if you could? Is that...
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, sir. Perfect timing, thank you.
Yep.
Panel, any questions? Nope. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we'll hear from the owner at 41 Douglas Crescent.
My name is Jacqueline Connors. I live at 41 Douglas Crescent, diagonally across from the subject property. I'm here to express my opposition to this application, which was set out in more detail in my letter dated May 13th. What's being proposed are not minor variances. This application is a drastic overreach, a proposal that pushes well beyond what the zoning permits and would irreversibly alter the character of the street in this neighborhood. I'm going to begin with the garage variance, described as minor but carrying outsized impact. The applicant is seeking to reduce the required setback for a garage on a corner lot from 6 meters to just 3.5 meters. This is not a marginal request. It would force a large detached structure far forward of every other home on this block, including the neighboring property at 42 Douglas Crescent, where the setback is 7.5 meters. The impact of this variance would be an almost four-meter forward projection that creates a jarring visual break in the streetscape. It disrupts the openness and balance between private homes and the street, a defining feature of this neighborhood's character and appeal. These spatial relationships are not incidental, they're intentional, and they're what gives this street its sense of order, light, and livability. When this neighborhood was first laid out, the city deliberately designed these lots to be generous, large enough for family homes with garages, driveways, and well-proportioned green space. The lot sizes were part of a planning vision for an open, tree-lined, low-density residential fabric emphasizing harmony with the natural ravine landscape and a balance between built structures and open areas. What the applicant is proposing runs entirely counter to that. This is an aggressive attempt to overload a small corner lot with as much house, garage, and pool as possible, far beyond what this property was ever intended to support. This is not gentle infill or modest intensification, it is overdevelopment. This pattern repeats across the application with 11 separate variances for building length, height, lot coverage, multiple setbacks, encroachments, all compounding each other. The result is not a minor departure from zoning, but an attempt to redraw the limits entirely. This kind of overbuild threatens the integrity of zoning rules that are supposed to preserve the character and function of stable neighborhoods. Urban forestry and ravine and natural feature protection units have both issued formal recommendations to deny this application, citing the destruction of a healthy, mature linden tree, 67.3 centimeters in diameter, and protected under city bylaw. The installation of a swimming pool, which was underemphasized by Mr. McCackee, is inappropriate for a lot of this size and configuration, especially one within a ravine-protected area. To proceed with this design, knowing it will require the destruction of a healthy, mature, bylaw-protected tree is indefensible, as the tree contributes to canopy, stormwater absorption, and neighborhood biodiversity. This application fails every part of the four-part test required by the Planning Act. It has become increasingly difficult to watch community planning and the Committee of Adjustment treat the city's zoning bylaws as flexible suggestions rather than binding standards. These bylaws are not merely guidelines, they are the product of careful planning, public consultation, and policy meant to protect neighborhoods like ours from exactly this kind of overdevelopment. When nearly every request for variance is granted, no matter how excessive, it signals to property developers that the rules don't matter, and to residents that their voices carry little weight. This application should be where that trend stops. I urge this committee to do what the city's experts are advising and reject this application. I will close by saying that contrary to Mr. McCackee's remarks, the property owner has been hostile and aggressive in his engagement with the community, which was completely unnecessary.
Okay, thank you very much. Panel, any questions? None, thank you. All right, do we have another speaker here?
Anyone here in person that wishes to speak to this item? See none? Okay, then we will go to our virtual speakers. Andrew?
Yes, hello, good morning.
Oh, hi. Can you give us your name and address, please, ma'am?
Yes, my name is Andrew Press.
Sorry, sir.
My address is 625 Church Street, Toronto, and I am representing the owner of 42 Douglas Crescent. They asked us to review the variances. They've also submitted a separate letter themselves expressing objection. And so I've filed a letter with the committee, and I just want to focus on one point now. I do not believe the variance 11 regarding the ancillary building is minor, and it should not be approved by the committee. And I would like to focus on the issue of precedent associated with the potential ancillary building. 31 Governor's Road is offered as a precedent, there is an ancillary building in the rear yard, which is down the, down the street from the subject property. But I do want to point out, and it's shown in the supplementary material that the applicant has provided, that property is actually a through lot. It's not a corner lot, and it actually has abutting at another through lot at 29 Governor's Road. So in fact, and it's quite possible that that particular ancillary building may be compliant with the zoning bylaw, because actually a separate section of the bylaw applies to that particular lot condition. It is not a corner lot within a budding property. And so I do, while it is an accessory building close to the street, I do not see it as a precedent, and there's a huge challenge here because of the adjacent residential building. And, you know, there are five other lots in this small neighborhood area, none of which have accessory buildings in the rear yard, ancillary buildings, and this would set a precedent for all of those properties as well. And so I think I would just submit that this isn't a minor request. I provided that outline in my letter. And then also, this sets a, an unreasonable precedent with respect to the specific bylaw area that they're seeking relief on. Those are my comments.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions, panel? No? All right, do we have any further speakers?
Mr. Chair, one more speaker from 23 Douglas Crescent.
Hi, Mr. Speaker and committee. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi there. My name's Darcy Walsh, 23 Douglas Crescent, across the street to the south. Oh, disclosure, we are building a new home there to move into with our family, and one of the things we find desirable about the Hilton family's proposal at 24 Douglas Crescent is that they are a nice family, and will be moving into that home with their children. We also, my wife, Amanda Carr, and I submitted a letter, which I'll just regurgitate. The new home is a vast improvement over the current structure, and we welcome it. So we are in support of the new home and having a nice family in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. All right, can we get the agent back? Mr. McCackee?
Hello. Hello.
I wonder, you've heard a number of comments, I wonder if you could take some time to respond.
Yeah, I want to focus on variance 11 that Andrew had brought up. We did look at that very carefully, and if you, I mean, if we can pull up that diagram that we last left off on, which was page five of our comments. I mean, there's a funny little property on the corner of that. If you go to the top of that diagram, I see what Andrew's referring to, where there's like an unbuilt lot there. I'm not sure if the city owns it or what, but there's nothing on it. It feels like it's a corner lot, and that, that structure is definitely, you know, with the proper landscaping around it, I think it's fine, like it doesn't really stick out like a sore thumb. We're, that's 0.8 meters away from the property, and we're proposing 3.5 meters away from the property line. And when we looked at some of the precedents that were brought up of these five other corner lots that don't have detached garages, one of them just doesn't have a garage at all, and they park in the front lawn, which we didn't think was a big improvement. And the other one has a reverse slope driveway, which, you know, is prone to flooding and in big storms, or, you know, the city's banned that because they're dangerous when you're trying to reverse out of them and hit pedestrians sitting on sidewalk. We do, you know, we require a garage length to allow for, you know, it's right, 5.6 meter minimum car length, plus we need space to move around, plus bins and bikes, and this is a growing family with, they don't want to have to have their bins in the backyard, which, you know, the sun can smell... which, you know, the sun can smell. It’s just practical to fit all of that stuff in the garage. If you look at the current, actually if we can go back to, is it image page seven? I just want to focus on that last image that really shows the relation of our proposal. The front of the garage does line up with, not the furthest part front, but the main wall face of our building, there’s that alignment. And I mean, originally we had a garden suite proposed that was two storeys tall there. And, you know, through discussion with our neighbour, we did feel that there was a bit of an impact on what they would feel, so we’ve reduced that and made an effort to move that away from the fence that’s currently there and the tall hedges. In terms of light and impact of what they’ll feel, we think this will be about the same because of the tall hedges that are currently there now. And, I mean, we did review this with City Planning and City Planning were in support of our application.
Okay, thank you, sir. Panel, any questions to the agent? Okay, we have no questions. All right, we’ll take this into committee for a decision. Peter?
Thanks Chair, I’ll start with some comments. I am concerned by the length variance and its impact on the tree in the rear yard. As Urban Forestry has outlined, I’m not sure, I didn’t really understand the applicant’s justification on that, but I think that that tree issue, and Urban Forestry has been very clear with that, that they’re not supportive of that tree going down and that’s, that tree’s, I think, a fundamental asset to this neighbourhood. The other element of the proposal that concerns me is the garage. I don’t think, I think the garage that the applicant’s talking about, one block north, is a different context, I think. There’s more room around it, it’s not immediately adjacent to a neighbour. And I think there are, there are ways that that can be dealt with, I think the bins could be put in a shed in the backyard or something and then that, it would stick out much less than is being proposed. But for me, I think in this current form, I can’t support the application.
Thank you. Phil?
I think I come to actually a similar conclusion, but for fairly different reasons. I don’t have an issue with the garage, I think there’s a lot of contacts around the city where on corner lots, things stick out a little more than the adjacent homes and the garage is in line with this building, so that doesn’t concern me. I do think I get what the explanation is about the linden, is that because the side yard variance isn’t implicated, they could site the entire building even without the length variance right on top of that tree. And then build it as of right and remove the tree as of right if they did that. But I do think the tree is quite sizable, contributes to the canopy a lot. And where I have trouble, I think Urban Forestry has a better point with the lot coverage because it’s hard to imagine them putting in a new home of this scale if that would affect the tree if the lot coverage variance weren’t there. So I do think Urban Forestry has a point and that’s the one. And it’s a bit of a shame because otherwise it’s actually a fairly attractive design. The nature of the home as a family home in this neighbourhood, I think, is pretty in keeping with the neighbourhood, but I just think the site constraints don’t permit it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I will agree wholeheartedly with my colleagues, I can’t support this one as currently. Peter?
Thanks Chair, for the reasons I put forward and my colleague, I move that we refuse this application.
Okay, motion by Mr Reed to refuse, seconded by Mr Gosh, all in favour. Opposed, Ms West dissents. That motion carries, the application is refused. Thank you, ma’am, thank you. All right, we move on to item number four. 312 St George Street. This is an application to convert the existing three-storey semi-detached dwelling into a multi-tenanted house containing 12 dwelling rooms, also to construct a rear third-storey terrace, a rear second, rear third stories exit staircase and a rear basement walkout. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revise site plan, floor plans and elevations received May 15th, four photographs of the subject property, covering letter from the agent, two covering letters from the agent, tree protection plan, planning justification letter from the agent, a copy of email correspondence between the agent and neighbours. We have correspondence in opposition from 314, 298 and 320 St George Street and the Annex Residence Association. We have staff reports from Urban Forestry. And that’s it.
Through you, Mr Chair, we do have the agent online as well as one registered speaker in opposition.
Good morning.
Or, sorry. Good morning.
Hi, good morning, thank you so much for having me. I’m Abdur Chatney, I’m the authorised agent behind this project, representing owners Susan Wong Kwan, Linda Burford Mason and Kimberly Wong, the three sisters who grew up in this house.
Okay, sir.
Before we begin, I just want to say thank you to everybody who’s helped make this possible, appreciate it.
Okay, you have five minutes, sir.
Super, there’s a PowerPoint presentation that we had circulated, I appreciated that could be brought up. It’s in the late folder.
I don’t see it in the supplementaries.
Is there anything I can do to help? Can I share screen? Oh, there we go, there we are. Thank you so much. Okay, super, so I’m going to quickly take you through an intro to the property and our proposal and, you know, thank you to May Moon for doing this and I’m going to just let you know when I switch slides. So this is 312 St George Street, next slide. So we’re here looking north towards Dupont and this section of St George Street from Bloor to Dupont has seen a lot of growth over the years because of its proximity to UFT, next slide. This is another photo of the semi-detached home, next slide. Photo of the home 312 St George, it’s the yellow one on the left-hand side, this is a winter view. I’m just great to ask you to switch to slide 21. So in quick summary, we’re requesting two variances. One is for the maximum number of dwellings and the second is for rear yard soft landscaping. If I could sum up this project, this project is not about a series of wants, but rather a series of needs. It is a student housing project that has been custom designed for this purpose. So I’d like to go back to slide six and quickly run through the floor plans and then our variances. Okay, so this is the existing basement plan, it’s a cellar, next slide. We’re converting it to provide mechanical rooms, laundry and an electrical room to govern the project and then three well-appointed student rooms. You’ll see that on every floor, we’ve got a bathroom and we need a rear second means of egress, so you enter through the front and then you enter through the back, next. This is the existing ground floor plan, as you can see there is a residential stair characteristic of a house, which will now go away because we needed to put in a code compliant, next slide, code compliant stair, with a bedroom and office for onsite resident advisor who will be helping manage this, 11 students that live here. Again, the same idea, three bedrooms a floor and then a second means of egress, next. This is the existing second floor plan, next. This is the proposed second floor plan, again a repetition of the structure that we’re fixing on the inside, next. This is the third floor plan, next, existing. It is being converted into a fantastic sort of living and dining area as well as an additional space for one resident. We are providing a third story terrace, there is an existing terrace on our neighbour’s site, so we’re just mirroring the design and format. And then of course we have our second means of egress that’s required by the building code, next. Existing roof, this stays the same, next. This is the existing front yard elevation, next. This is the proposed front yard elevation, we’re just fixing everything up and bringing it to compliance while maintaining the character of the neighbourhood. You could feel free to glaze through the next few slides because they convey the same amount of information, rear elevation, transitioning next into code compliance, windows are gone, terrace is there, privacy screen has been introduced, next. South elevation being streamlined, next. And then again going back to the two variances, just quickly if I can just glaze through variance one, maximum, next slide. Maximum number of dwelling units, so we know, next slide. We know that there’s citywide permissions for a maximum number of six bedrooms in most residential zones, next slide. This characterises what’s going on with that policy permitting 12 rooms, as you can see, next slide. Next slide, sorry about that, next slide. We’re very close to George Brown College and UFT and this is why getting to 12 bedrooms is required. UFT is suffering from a housing shortage of 15,000 bedrooms and this project is providing that. And so we believe this is minor in nature, next slide. Next slide. Next slide. The rear yard soft landscaping is currently at 45%, next slide, this is the existing and this is our proposed of just reprogramming what is there, including the preservation of trees and the installation of code required items such as mechanical, garbage, rear means of egress, next slide. We believe that this proposal maintains the general intent of the official plan, the zoning bylaw, and it’s a desirable and appropriate format and use of land. And we believe because it’s existing, it’s maintaining these existing built form, that this proposal is minor in nature. Again, this project is about a series of needs, not wants. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Panel, any questions? None? I’ll be first, oh, sorry, Gary?
Yeah, sir, just, so it’s a three-story semi-detached dwelling, what’s its current or most recent use? Was it a single-family dwelling?
It was a single-family dwelling that my clients grew up in, they are now adults with kids, their parents passed away in the home. And they were hosting students throughout their sort of lifetime and, you know, the property is in rough shape. And so, you know, we’re a missing middle design-build company and we are helping our client transition this to its next phase, which is a legally compliant, well-ordained, well-designed, code-compliant student housing project to really provide the kind of housing that’s needed. And it’s neighbouring to a lot of new development that’s occurring as students move up north, right?
But you are doubling the density, going from six dwelling rooms to 12.
We are, and I think, what’s the rationale behind that? Well, the rationale behind that is that the policy for 12 bedrooms exists. I’d like to go to this map in the PowerPoint. Sorry, go back, let me just give you the slide, I think it’s very indicative of how the policy is there, but it’s stuck in some ways. Okay, this is slide 24, two slides prior. This map is the 12-room dwelling room special area map and it denotes special areas that are deemed by the city to host up to 12 rooms. Now, it’s very interesting if you look at it, that UFT and its north side are completely exempt, but this overlay continues due west where there is a lack of educational institutions. Certainly the reasoning for that density may have been different to, you know, provide more housing options near transit and popular areas. And the same repeats on the east side where we have TMU and again another sort of popular set of areas that are well-connected by transit. So here we are in our neighbourhood, next slide is 25, could you please go to the next Thank you. In our neighbourhood, we have right by the site, these mixed-use areas and adjacent to us, we have apartment neighbourhoods. Then you see that there’s a general employment area on Dupont, which really is a street people spend a lot of their Saturdays on, it’s commercial, it’s active, et cetera. So this site is really framed by these two neighbourhoods, even though it is in our zoning, next.
Okay, sir, I think you’ve made your point, thank you very much. We can move to the next speaker?
Yes, through you, Mr Chair, we can hear from the owner at 314 St George Street.
Hi.
My name is Vicky Visvis and I’m the owner of 314 St George Street.
Great, you have five minutes, ma’am.
Thank you. One can certainly understand the applicant’s desire to increase the number of affordable dwelling rooms in light of the city’s housing shortage. But the issue here is whether this increase properly constitutes a minor variance within the existing zoning bylaw. I believe the applicant’s requested change from the permitted six to 12 dwelling rooms does not constitute a minor variance, first because it proposes a 100% increasing dwelling rooms, which is not minor in both size and impact, and second because the nature of the change is more in keeping with a zoning amendment, not a minor variance to an existing bylaw. As such, rezoning would be outside the Committee of Adjustments purview. So to support my first point, I’d like to refer to the new framework for multi-tenant rooming houses, which City Council adopted on December 14th, 2022. The framework maintains the limit on the maximum number of dwelling rooms in a rooming house at six. Given City Council’s recent confirmation of the maximum number of dwelling rooms in a rooming house, the request to change from six to 12 dwelling rooms, a 100% increase, is not minor in both size and impact. A 2023 committee and appeal decision to deny the conversion of a six-room dwelling house into a 22-room dwelling house, a 267% increase at 400 Euclid Avenue, confirms the city’s concerns about overcrowding in rooming houses and in the case of 400 Euclid, illegal construction. This precedent is also relevant because, like the applicants, the owner of 400 Euclid took the position that there would be no increase in the footprint of the building and did not address the major excavation that would need to take place at the basement level to accommodate the increase in occupants. I think there can be no doubt that City Council, speaking through its resolutions, bylaws and precedents, intends to limit the maximum number of dwelling rooms in a rooming house to six now and into the future. In relation to my second point, I’d like to refer to the specific zoning bylaws that influence the applicant’s case. As the applicant’s recognising their justification statement, because 312 St George Street is north of Bloor Street, it’s designated neighbourhoods in the city of Toronto’s official plan. Therefore, it is outside not only the 12 dwelling room special area, but also the designated apartment neighbourhoods, which are permitted south of Bloor Street. In effect, what the applicant’s are requesting is not really a minor variance which seeks relief from specific provisions within an existing zoning bylaw. Instead, the applicant’s proposed changes should be addressed as a zoning amendment. As such, the applicant’s request would be beyond the purview of the Committee of Adjustment, which does not have the power to set and to change existing zoning boundaries. The applicant’s desired change from six to 12 dwelling rooms would therefore have to be sought by way of rezoning, not through the minor variance application process. In closing, I would like to draw the committee’s attention to Section 2H of the Planning Act, which sets out as a matter of provincial interest, the orderly development of safe and healthy communities. The applicant’s plans do not ultimately support this mandate in their emphasis on overcrowding and insufficient amenities to satisfy the needs of 12 tenancies. While the applicant’s contend that 312 St George Street can comfortably house 12 occupants, the plans suggest otherwise. The existence of a single small kitchen, which can only seat six people, speaks to the plan’s fundamental inability to accommodate the reasonable needs of 12 tenants, such as refrigeration, access to cooktops and ovens and use of a dining table and chairs. Put plainly, it’s like trying to put 10 pounds of sugar into a five-pound bag, it just doesn’t fit. like trying to put 10 pounds of sugar into a five-pound bag. It just doesn't fit. While I agree we need more housing, I hope the committee does not support warehousing tenants in overcrowded conditions that risk compromising their physical and mental health by creating a dangerous precedent. Many thanks for your time and consideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you, ma'am. Just to clarify, so you're at 314. You are in the adjacent semi?
Yes, I am.
And you live there? This is a single-family dwelling?
No, it's a fourplex. I live in one of the units, and I have three other units with three tenants.
Okay. Your cover letter, your letter you submitted also made reference to 316 St. George as being a rooming house. Since you raised it in your letter, are you familiar with that facility?
Yes, I am.
How many residents are in that building?
I think, yeah, so 316, it's, I think, 316 and 318. So it's two properties joined together. It's part of Loft Canada, and it's St. George House. It's supervised, from what I understand, I might not be getting the numbers right, but I think they have 20 to 23 residents in the two large Victorians. So it's not one house, it's two houses.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Panel, any questions to the speaker? No? Okay. I think, is that it? Sabrina? All right, let's go back to the agent.
Hi, can everybody see and hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you. Oh, where is it? Oh, no worries. I'll just speak. Thank you so much, everybody. We really appreciate everyone's input and their feedback. And just to quickly summarize, we did get, you know, four letters of objections to which an explanation was sent and provided. Certainly, some emails have a U-Toronto email address, and it is very important that we, you know, we take this into consideration, the fact that the students don't have a voice in this conversation. U of T has a shortage of 15,000 bedrooms that they cannot bring to market. As positioned by our neighbor, who, Vicky, pleased to hear from you, you're more than welcome to reach out to me per our ongoing correspondence, this neighborhood has a pattern of rooming houses, illegal or not, rooming houses or fourplexes. Even fourplexes generate 12 bedrooms. If you do four units in three-bedroom units, they're family size, that's going up across the street. So all that to say is that there is zoning impetus for this. Neighborhoods can now be densified. This, you know, the city's planning framework has in fact changed. And so therefore, you know, we've requested two simple variances. One is for a conversion to 12 dwelling rooms. The house is large enough that it can accommodate really well-appointed units. At our office, we're active in about 30 projects from the capital to London. We take it very seriously when we build in these communities. I wake up every day looking after the fact that everything is built to spec. We are doing everything brand-new. And I'd like to turn to a couple pages just to be able to demonstrate the quality we're intending to achieve. Again, this is a PMTSA zone, two transportation nodes near transit. Just give me one minute. I'm going to give you the slide number for reference. This is slide 28. So, you know, this is the standard at which we're looking at for student housing. If you can see these precedent images, they've got twin bedrooms. We wanted to make sure we've got double bedrooms because we understand how important it is for our students to sometimes Netflix and chill. And they've got a study area near a window and, you know, cabinetry for their storage. If you go to the basement, which is, oh, next slide. Let's go to the next slide. Let's talk about the shared living space. The terraces, you know, of course, deposited there for egress from that floor because in multi-tenant housing and building code, the building code is even more strict than traditional apartments. In a multi-tenant housing project, every suite has to be fire-rated as if it's an apartment. So we have built in all those items and are working well on our way towards building permit and to launch the project hopefully before the new school year so that 12, sorry, 11 new students have quality spaces that are newer and sometimes more well-ventilated than even university housing in some cases. We're doing student housing projects from Guelph to London, Ontario, at Western, and we continue to get good feedback from students about our mission and vision and what we're trying to do in these communities to really bring these housing assets. This is a house or a property is our shared resource. If we could share it with more people, it becomes cheaper, and we know how cost-constrained students are. Again, there is precedent on St. George, just two houses down of a 24-unit dwelling house. So if you did divide those two Victorians into two, you get 12. Or if the alternative would be to plex this house, it would also then result in 12 units, and maybe that variance goes away. So mathematically, we're getting to 12. Policy-wise, we're in the direction of gentle densification. This is all code compliant. And yes, you see a dining table with six chairs, but students are going in and out. We intend to have two fridges. Really, this is a dream project for all of us, to build a kind of student housing project we aspire to live in. And of course, we wanted to make sure that there is a resident advisor to be there for students. We know that times are changing, education is changing, mental health is changing. So we want to make sure that we have best-in-class management and care for those who live here. And that's our proposal at the heart of it.
Great. Thank you, sir. Panel, any questions to the agent? Gary?
Yes, sir. Thanks. The owner at 314 said that the standard, if I can put it that way in terms of units, was done in 2022. Is that correct? I was just trying to ask you, in recent years, was there any?
I'm so sorry. I couldn't hear you appropriately, but I guess you're asking about the timeline of the project and its history?
No, I'm not. I'm sorry. I didn't hit the button. I was saying that the owner at 314 has said that the standard with respect to the number of units was set just in 2022. Is that correct? Now, I was just trying to understand, you know, when this sort of multi-tenant provision was made. Yeah, okay.
Yes. So, no worries. Absolutely. Thank you for your question.
Well, of course, I'm suggesting, of course, that, you know, that it's new, and you're asking for a change now to go to 12 units.
Yes, I understand. And this is, you know, we have at Clip Homes, we've had the great opportunity and pleasure of advising the city of Toronto on multiple bylaws, not just the multiplex in major streets. And one of the things we recognize, working in every different town, is that policy is created to help. Does policy work always from one side to side? Not always. And so therefore, minor variances are sought. That's sort of the systemic explanation of what's underpinning the proposal. So yes, as per the map, this new policy was introduced in 2022. Now, that map shows us that, hey, this section of Toronto was left out in the annex. Well, that section is where all the kids are renting, and that's where they want to be. They want to be close. They want to be close to their university. I can speak from my experience.
Okay, sir. Sir, I'm just going to draw that to a conclusion. I think you've answered the member's question. Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We will take it into committee. Anyone have any comments or thoughts? Phil?
I understand where my fellow panelist, Mr. McKay, is coming from, but I do take a bit of a different view. I lived in the annex for a number of years. St. George is a street that has a lot of student housing. It has apartments on it. This is right at the block with Dupont. It's extremely close to two subway stations or possibly more, depending on how you define that. I think this type of change, so many of these buildings have very poor quality student housing in them, have, you know, one apartment on each floor, so then it's, you know, four apartments if you include the basement, and each of those apartments has three bedrooms, and then you end up with the same density. Whereas here, it's, you know, just being done in a more thoughtful way. I don't think it's an overbuild of the site. I think it's desirable.
Anyone else? Gary, did you have thoughts on this one? You asked a number of questions.
My own thinking is that I think the object here is at 14 is correct in that terms of the, this probably should be looked at as a rezoning matter, not a minor variance. So that's my view there. I can't support the variances.
All right. Peter?
Thanks, Chair. I agree with Phil. I think that this is, whether it's dwelling rooms or neighbors, I think that this is a pretty similar outcome in terms of if it were divided into multiple apartments. I do commend the neighbor. That was a very well-thought-out and well-supported submission. But I think, to me, the impact of this is, the impact of adding these additional six rooms is not significantly negative. So I would support this application, too.
Okay. Nizola?
To you, Mr. Chair. I believe that having converting six, instead of six dwelling, having 12, it's a little excessive. I think it's too many rooms, so I'm not supporting variance number one.
Okay. I appreciate everyone's perspective on this one. My only observation on this, and I think it's going to frame my decision, is that it's a semi. And we're detached. I don't think there'd be an issue, but I am a little bit concerned about the additional density in a semi-detached when the adjacent semi has raised a number of significant concerns. And while those, that semi is tenanted, it is tenanted by the owner as well. And so these are permanent residents. And, you know, having student accommodation in the adjacent semi, to me, just, I think that presents a significant impact. And I didn't hear anything. I appreciate that the agent is proposing to have an onsite supervisor, which should help, but we've all been students before and sitting and living right next to someone in a semi who considers that their permanent home. I think that represents a significant impact. So I'm probably not going to support it.
Recognizing that you're the dividing vote, the way this is going down, I'll just make one quick counterargument, which is, the semis, if you look at these semis, they are very large and built in the 1800s. They're not similar to semis built, I mean, it's crazy to say things built in the 1920s are 100 years ago, but they are. They're not similar to the semis built 100 years ago, these semis that were built 140 years ago. The walls are very thick masonry.
Fair point.
So I don't know that it's quite the same. That would just be my counterpoint.
Thank you for that. All right. We'll look to someone for a motion.
So, okay, yeah, go.
Did you have further comments?
No, I was going to go into a motion, but I'm happy.
Go ahead, Phil. You're right first.
I'll make my attempt. So for the reasons that I've expressed, I do think it's in keeping with the neighborhood, and I'll move to approve it.
I'd second that.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gauch to approve the application. There was a forestry condition, right, Phil?
Yes, condition two.
Yes, subject to condition two.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? Opposed. That motion fails. I'll look to someone for another motion. Gary?
Yes, all right. For the reasons that I outlined in our discussion, I'm moving that we refuse this application for these two variances on St. George Street.
Okay. Motion by Mr. McKay to refuse. Seconded by Nizwest. All in favor? Opposed. That motion carries. The application is refused. Thank you. Okay. Move on to item number five. 75 Harvey. This is an application to legalize and maintain the existing rear one-story addition, which was constructed without an authorized building permit. Committee has informed a copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations for photographs of the subject property. We have covering letter from the agent, previous decision number reflecting the subject property in order to comply. There is five form letters in support from 73, 77, 81, 122 Harvey Avenue, and 146 Ascot.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Vincent Nguyen. I'm at 39 Annie Craig Drive in the Tobico.
Okay, sir. It is a fairly straightforward application. However, you have been issued an order to comply. I wonder if you could give us some perspective on what's happened here?
Okay, yeah. So to give you a context, this is an existing two-story building on a very narrow lot. Okay? So the owners wanted to get a bit of extra living space, so they decided to build a second-story overhanging addition. We took this to committee a few months ago, and this was for a variance in regards to the building depth. This was accepted. Okay? Now, the second-story addition was completed, and the owners found that there was still a lack of living space. So they want to seek to, I guess, enclose the area underneath the overhanging second-story addition, right? This is about 170 square feet. It's directly underneath the second-story addition, so it doesn't affect any of the heights, any of the setbacks, any of the lot coverage, or anything that would really affect any of the neighbors. Now, I believe they were coming into a time where the winter weather was changing, and they were under the impression that they could just submit a revision for these changes. However, that was not the case. And now we're here again, and we're seeking a minor variance for the floor space index because the addition would result in an FSI of 0.78, whereas permitted is 0.6. Now, yes?
No, I, anything further?
No, they spoke with the neighbors. We have support from the neighbors. The two next-door neighbors are in support. The lot backs up onto a laneway, so the neighbors at the rear wouldn't really be affected by this at all. It's not a huge change. It's not visible. It's not really affecting the character of the neighborhood. So we believe that it's minor in nature.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Panel, any questions? Okay, we have no questions. We'll take this into committee. Who wants to take this one? Peter?
Thanks, Chair. I think that this is a minor variance. The real impact, I think, would be the second floor, but that's already approved. This is just filling in a void on the first floor. So I think the impacts of this additional FSI are absolutely nil. So for that reason, I'll move approval of the application without condition.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Reed to approve. Seconded by Phil. Mr. Gauch, you want comments?
I do want to comment as well, because I was here for the original approval. And then I also noticed that there's a letter saying, so there is an order to comply here. And so I just would like the record to reflect that we don't condone constructing without a permit, because there also is a letter that says, oh, well, we always intended to get this permission, and we were just rushing before the winter. And none of that really is an excuse for it. So it is minor. I second it, but I think we should include it on the record.
Sure, for sure. All right. Peter, you okay with that?
Certainly.
All right. Motion by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Gauch to approve. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you. With that note for the minutes. Is everyone okay to continue, or does anyone need a break?
Maybe a
A short break? We'll take a five minutes. Five minutes, no, Phil?
Maybe nine.
Nine, not 10.
Because that would bring us to 11:10.
Sort of ninth inning.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
Cameras off, guys?
Are we unmuted?
Yeah, YouTube's going, right?
Yeah. Okay, we can get going.
Okay. All right, we continue with item number six. 158 Indian Grove. This is an application to construct a new three-story ancillary building containing a laneway suite in the rear yard abiding the laneway. There'll be a total of five residential dwelling units on this lot. Committee has before to copy a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, four photographs of trees on the subject property, an arborist report. We have staff reports from TTC and from urban forestry. We have correspondence and support from 174, 174 Indian Grove. And form letters from, in support of, from 157, 162 and 164 Indian Grove.
Through you Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Hi, hello?
Good morning, Maggie.
Good morning. This is Maggie. I'm the, I'm the owner actually of 158, and also the applicant. We are actually request a postponement of this file to be reviewed in the next hearing due to our project is a, combined with our adjacent neighbor, which is 160 Indian Grove. So, our project is a two semi-detached manly house to be built together. So, we have, we would like to request the deferral and to do the both projects COE at the same time.
Okay, thank you. Actually, I think members were probably going to raise that as well or ask that question. So, that frankly makes sense. It helps the panel deal with them as a complete package. So, that's a good suggestion. Anyone have any questions? No? Let's take it into committee. I think it's a good idea. Peter?
Sure, thanks Chair. Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, I think this is a very solid application. But I think with the details of the property to the north, this will be more complete. So, I move that we defer the application per the applicant's request.
Okay. Motion to defer by Mr. Reed. Seconded by Mr. McKay. All in favor? You have your deferral. Thank you. Item number seven. 103 Cohill Road. This is an application to alter the existing, excuse me, three-story apartment building containing three residential dwelling units by constructing a front three-story addition. Also, to construct front and rear ancillary buildings for waste storage and six bicycle parking spaces. A front ancillary outdoor area for five parking spaces. There'll be a total of 13 residential dwelling units on this lot. Committee has before to copy a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Revised site plan, receive, floor plans, elevations, received May 13th. Redline public notice, received May 13th. Twenty photographs of the subject property. Email correspondence from the agent and an arborist report. We have email correspondence from the TRCA and Transportation Review. And staff reports from urban forestry and a, another for urban forestry. Excuse me. We have correspondence and opposition from 105 Cohill Drive and from the Swansea Area Rate Payers Association.
Through you Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online as well as two registered speakers.
Okay. Good morning. Mr. Azimovik? Oh. Mr. Azimovik? Is she there?
Dan, you're unmuted. Through you Mr. Chair. It appears that his mic is not unmeeting. So, I'm going to try recalling him again.
Okay, great, thanks.
Give me the detailed message along with your phone number and we will return your call as soon-
Okay, do we, having trouble reaching the agent? Do you want to keep trying, or should we come back to this one?
Dan, you're unmuted.
All right, we will stand this one down and come back to it after the next item. Which is item number eight.
Through you Mr. Chair. We might be able to hear both item eight and nine. Same agent.
Yes, good point. They're-
Side by side.
Yep. Okay. Is it the same agent?
Yep.
Is the agent online?
Yep.
Good morning, sir.
We'll have to-
Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna see whether he's okay with combining.
Edward, you're unmuted.
Edward Rogers here. 95 Rafferty Avenue, Parkin 17.
Sir, if you can just get a little closer to the microphone, please.
Oh, sure. Okay, can you hear me better now?
A little better. Sir, you are the agent for items number eight and nine, are you?
Correct.
Is it okay if we combine those two items?
Yes, it is.
Did he say okay?
Yes.
All right. Standby. I'll just read these into the record. Item eight is 6 Belfair Avenue. This is an application to reconstruct the rear one-story semi-detached ancillary building. And also to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear covered porch at the southwest portion- porch at the southwest portion of the dwelling with stairs and a landing and a rear great patio. Committee has before a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations received May 4th, correspondence from the agent, arborist report and correspondence in opposition from 119 Waverly Road. Item number nine is 4 Belfair Avenue. This is an application to reconstruct the rear one-story semi-detached ancillary building which is a garage, also to a portion of the existing rear deck will be demolished. Committee has for a copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, previous decisions affecting the subject property, an arborist report, staff report from community planning and correspondence again in opposition from 119 Waverly Road. All right, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair, obviously we do have the agent online. No registered speakers for this item.
Okay. Good morning, sir. Mr. Broders.
Okay, so...
So maybe since you're combining them, we don't have anyone here to speak, but there is a letter of opposition, but maybe given that you're combining two applications, just a quick overview of what you're proposing?
Proposing a new garage for two properties. It's a single project.
Can you guys hear? Sir, can I just ask you to speak up a little bit? You're...it's hard to hear you.
Okay, sorry. So, okay, so yes, we're combining the...combining the two garages, basically one project. But we're asking the various heights for the garages and/or the garage and we're asking for decreased software and stablement of properties.
That's it?
Yes, clear.
Okay. All right, panel, any questions? Peter?
Thanks Chair. In the photos that are in the arborist report, it looks, I'm not sure which, but it looks like number four, Belfair. Their grass space is actually artificial grass. I want to confirm that in the site plan that you've provided, it says that it's going to be grass. So I want to confirm that the commitment is to remove that artificial grass and put in real soft landscaping?
Yes, we will put in real soft landscaping.
Great, thanks.
Does that change the variance at all? Or is that...this is four or...Peter, this is four or...
I think it's four, but no, I wouldn't...the site plan says grass. I think just the current situation now is artificial. But the site plan says grass, so we could potentially tie it.
Just let's confirm. Sir, is variance number one for 4 Belfair, is that still correct? 23% soft landscaping?
No, we...35%.
35%? So you're amending that variance?
Yes.
Okay. So do you have... So sir, do you have...so you're amending variance number one for 4 Belfair to 35%. Do you have the square meterage for that?
48.5 meters square.
I'm sorry, sir. Again, if you're on speaker, you're speaking far from the microphone.
Oh, not, it's just a weird...48.5 meters square.
48.5 meters square?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other changes to any of the variances you have before us?
Well, I...we submitted a set of drawings, so the new height should also be 4.5 meters and not 4.6 meters as originally posted.
So variance number two for 4 Belfair should be 4.5 meters?
That's correct.
And does that change 6 Belfair as well? Well, it's already 4.49?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Phil?
These new revised numbers, are they the numbers that are in the May 13 drawing set? Because planning has asked us to tie our approval to a May 13 drawing set, so I just want to make sure that these amendments don't create something different than that set.
Okay, we have a set of drawings that was submitted later.
Yes, but the numbers that you just provided to the committee, are those in accordance with this set of drawings that were submitted?
Okay, I don't know which one you have in file. Can I see that again, please?
Are there revised drawings?
No, this is the wrong one. We reduced the size of the deck.
Do we have that, Sabrina? I don't think we have revised set of drawings.
No.
Sir, when did...when did you submit your revised drawings?
I submitted to the planner last week.
What does planning say? Is it...do they have a date on it?
May 13th.
Is this the May 13th version?
It seems to be the earlier version.
Sorry, so the planning report indicates tying it to the plans received on May 13th. You're saying there was a revised set of plans after that?
No, this is not the May 13 plan though.
Yeah, if you look at these plans, it says April 7th, so I think we don't have the plans that planning is referring to.
Okay. Sabrina, can we still tie it to the May 13 plans even though we haven't seen them?
No. Through you, Mr. Chair, no. It has to be before us in order for us to review. I don't see anything in the file other than the plans that are before us right now. So ultimately, because they've made revisions to the variances, then that suffices. We don't actually have to tie them to any plans.
What was planning's rationale for...oh, so that wanted to tie it to the increased soft landscaping, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if we have the variance for soft landscaping, that should be sufficient?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Gary, you had your hand up. Did you have a point to make?
That's fine, it's okay.
Okay. Sir, I just have one last question. The rebuilt garage, does it have a roof deck on it?
No, it doesn't.
It does?
It does not.
It does not? Okay, thank you. Panel, any further questions? Nope? Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, if we can get separate motions for item eight versus nine only because of the amendments...
Right, they're slightly different, okay. All right, Ms. Zilla?
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. Staff had a recommendation on May 13 that be tied to site plan east, northwest and south elevation.
We were just discussing that and...
So not even the elevation? No? Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we don't have those revised plans before us, so the committee can't tie something to plans that we don't have before us.
Thank you.
All right. Who wants to make a motion on this one? Phil?
Yeah, just to address that comment of my friend on the panel, our other option would be just to defer it until we have those, but I'm satisfied with the variance change and with the rationale that planning made that we don't need to tie it to plans. So for that reason, well, I'll start with 6 Belfair. Since it's first, I would move to approve it as amended.
Okay.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Item number eight, 6 Belfair, no amendments, which is just approval.
No amendments to eight. Oh, that's why we needed two motions.
Yes.
Yes, okay. I would move to approve item number eight, 6 Belfair, as is.
Okay, motion to approve by Mr. Gross, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor. You have...that one item is approved. Let's move on to item number nine, 4 Belfair. Phil, do you want to take this as well?
Sure, I would move to approve this one as amended. Again, very small variances, reasonable.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor. You have your approvals, two items are approved. Can we go back to item number seven? Is our agent with us?
Dan, you're unmuted.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Dan Chmulec, I'm the architect for the project at 103 Cohill located at 1185 Queensley East, Suite 3A in Mississauga.
Great, thank you, sir. We have some people who have some concerns about this, so we'll need a presentation, please.
Certainly. My unfortunate situation is still, I am not able to log into the WebEx. I'm only able to hear you through my cellphone. The WebEx connection is still sitting there trying to reconnect. There was a massive bell outage this morning just before the COA, so that may have something to do with it. So I'm not sure if your people can let me into the meeting. I've tried connecting and it's just sitting there.
Hang on a second, we'll stop the clock for a second. He's having difficulty on his end.
Through you, Mr. Chair, he's speaking to us via his phone and so he can hear us. Yes?
Correct.
Does he have a presentation?
So we can continue.
I'm unable to see the presentation also, I'm not sure how to present with, I'm not able to see the drawings, so I guess I'll guide you through the presentation.
So do you have...did you submit a presentation, sir?
Did I submit a presentation? Yes, yes, it's the drawings that I've submitted.
Oh, just the drawings, okay.
Okay, so can you refer to the drawings? And like you would have the presentation in front of you right now?
Okay.
On your end, not through WebEx, but on your end, and then you can refer to the drawings and we can present those.
Okay, sounds good, yeah. I mean, potentially if you could please focus in on the site plan, we can start with that one.
Sir, before you begin and before we start the clock, I'm just going to...you've submitted a red line public notice, I just want you to confirm the changes you've made to the variances, please. You're changing variance number three?
Correct, yes.
And you're changing it from 33% to 34.59?
33.59.
Correct. Finally, can you hear me again?
I can't hear him.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, if you have two devices, you have to mute one of them. Dan, you're unmuted and connected.
There we go, finally.
There you go, so WebEx is working again.
Technology is great when it works. Yes, sir, there are a couple of variances, number three and number eight have been revised. And the reason for that, I can quickly explain that to you. A week or two ago, one of the planning people from the city emailed us basically saying that they're not in support of the...what we had is a refuse area at the front of the building, which also contains some bike storage. We basically suggested to place that at the back of the site, which, once we open up the actual site plan, we can take a look at. So by reducing or removing the refuse area out of the front of the building near the street, we were able to increase the landscaping, soft landscaping. And there was...yeah, and number eight is basically simply removed because of the structure.
All right, then you can proceed with your presentation, sir.
Wonderful, yes.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, so variance eight is being removed? And what is the change to variance number three?
It's on that last page that we actually just...
No, you have to say it...you have to say it out loud.
Oh, okay.
For public record.
Yep, sounds good, just one second, I'm opening up my files. So item or variance number three, a minimum of 50% of the required landscaping must be provided as soft landscaping initially, that number was 33. It has been revised, sorry, to 34.59% at 200.07 square meters.
Okay, so any further changes?
No, that's it.
Okay. And does that change...that doesn't change...it does change the description, the purpose of the application? Because you're not...you're only doing a rear building for waste storage, right?
Correct.
So how would you restate that second sentence in the purpose?
I think the word could...also to construct front and rear ancillary, so the front would be removed. The rear ancillary building would remain.
Okay. All right.
That's it. Yeah, just remove the...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now you can go ahead with your presentation.
Perfect, yeah, so this is actually a good place to start these renderings, if you don't mind, I can quickly describe it. If you can go back up to the first page, the renderings on that...those first few renderings just basically describe what we're proposing. So as you can see, on the left-hand side is the existing, it is red brick right now, but we're proposing to paint it the same color. But it is a raised two-story building, right? So there's three units inside that existing building to the left. And then to the right of that, with a slope roof, to the right of that, you're going to see the additional building, basically that we're proposing. So it's in addition to the existing building, we connected the two with a one-story structure that acts basically as a lobby or as an entrance, and it doesn't negatively impact the existing building. The existing building contains three units in itself. The proposed building is a three-story, raised three-story building with a basement below. Total number of units is 10 units, nine on the upper, three and then one unit in the basement with two basement units not being utilized as units but as amenity space for the tenants at this development. Okay, so now we can slide over to the site plan. Okay, and as you can see, the existing...if you can just zoom in a little bit on the site plan, yep, that's perfect, thank you. As you can see, the existing building is noted in a dark gray and the property itself is rather large, but the problem with it is that it's rather narrow. It does have a shared driveway between 103 and 105. Basically, our initial design for this proposal was a detached building a little bit further from the existing. We tried to create a space in between, a landscape space that all the tenants could use, but that list of variance was significantly worse than the one that we have now. In working with the planning department, we basically took the proposed new building and put it closer to the existing, physically connected them at grade only with a shared lobby slash bicycle storage area. This way, we actually ended up with one building on the site versus two detached buildings. The other challenge on the site, right in the middle of where it says stair number two, you will see the red outline which depicts the front setback which is significant. It is, I believe, 45 meters or so. And basically, by pushing the new building right up to the existing, we were able to minimize our front setback. Unfortunately, the front setback is still significant. There are some of these variances that are listed here, and with two minutes to go, I'll just quickly go over variance number one. The actually...sorry, the front setback is 40.5 meters, we're asking for 17.46. This is from the street side, yep, right there. And then item number two discusses item number two, item number three and number four, all deal with soft scape amounts, if you will. I would suggest for a site of this size, we're basically trying to do some soft intensification on this property by not introducing something that's out of character. There is a rather large building to...just to the south of us, as you know from your site visit. We also introduced some parking right up against the...in the front yard towards the street, so for convenience perspective. We also have to have it...one of the units is barrier free, so we had to introduce a bit of a barrier free access on that side. There's quite a bit of grading issues with the site as well, so we had to do quite a few sort of design changes to this in order to make the barrier free work into one of the units that we have. Other than that, there are four stair towers in order to satisfy the OBC... Other than that, there are four stair towers in order to satisfy the OBC requirements of two entrances from each unit. So four stair towers will basically serve three bays of units. That's how this bill is sort of shown to you there. Variances number five deals with that ancillary outdoor area. Again, the site is quite tight, so we have very limited space, and those are the reasons why some of these variances are showing up here. Item number six, a lot may have, again, ancillary outdoor area used for parking. In this case, ancillary outdoor parking is right up to the zero lot line, and the reason for that is we're just trying to maximize the amount of parking for what would result in ten plus three units, so thirteen apartments on this property. Maximum building depth is seventeen. We are at thirty, and that's just because we connected the two buildings together. And just finally, number nine deals with a building has uses for the bicycle parking, and it's requiring bicycle maintenance room. I don't think that's, you know, something that a residential building of this size requires, so we didn't provide for that space.
Okay, sir, thank you. We do have someone who wants to speak to this item, but I wanted to ask a quick question beforehand. The forty-meter setback is obviously quite unusual. There are a series of what looks like three-story walk-ups along that stretch. Do you know the history as to why there is such an extensive setback? Was it anticipated that there was going to be a right of way or changes made to the Cohill or Windermere?
Unfortunately, I'm not aware of what the reason was. I do agree with you that it's very, you know, extreme in a location like this. I do not see why the city would have this, you know, potentially it's a bylaw that's been around some time. But again, it is extreme, and it does not seem to make a lot of sense. In fact, if you look at the buildings to the south of us, they are much closer than what existing 103 Cohill is. It's dwarfed in size by the buildings next to us.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have someone who wants to speak to this item. Ma'am, do you want to come up? No, you're gonna have to sit down, turn the microphone on, and start with your name and address, please. Joe? Someone give you a hand here. Hang on a sec.
Sorry, Anna. We also have David online.
Yeah.
Are you sharing the five minutes? You can sit down.
No, he would be separate.
No. So you're both from the same household, so you either share the five minutes?
I see. We have three... We're co-owners, and we have three different units.
Okay, but it's from the same property?
Same property.
Okay, so you either share the five minutes, or you have one person speak for five minutes? How do you want to do that?
I'll just try to motor through this, and if there's any time left.
Then we'll connect with him. Okay, you can sit down.
And I'd also like to address the two points about why the setbacks, since Mr. Azimovik didn't know the history, which I happen to know.
Okay.
Why don't you have a seat?
Have a seat.
Yeah.
Is it okay if I stand?
Sure. It's just that your microphone's on, right? The red button's on?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, just try and get close to the microphone.
Sorry, the only problem is, is do you see yourself on video right now? That's what we see on YouTube, so I'd like for you to sit down. Thank you.
Okay. All right?
All right, go ahead, ma'am. Oh, sorry, your name and address first.
I will go very quickly. Anna Harris, owner of 105 Cohill Drive, and I've lived in the area for thirty years.
Okay.
So I'm going to motor through this, but before I do, I want to compliment the previous lady who had blonde hair, black suit. She was speaking for the Rosedale area. I also want to compliment the woman who was virtually speaking with an Australian accent. These women, I can't begin to compare to their composition, the excellence of their composition, and the command of the bylaws. This is a first time for me.
All right.
I don't want my lack of experience and ability to summarize to in any way lessen the severity of this proposed plan, which is nothing minor.
All right, ma'am. Since those are introductory, I'm going to ask staff to reset the clock for you, so you've got your full five minutes.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'm objecting to Mr. Cho's proposal for variances for 103 Cohill Drive. My understanding is that Mr. Cho has never lived in the area. He lives far away in Markham. His history demonstrates that as a landlord, he has little concern for his tenants, or the property, or the neighborhood, or the environment, or his impacts, and his plans bear no resemblance to the entire cityscape or streetscape of Windermere, Cohell, and Ellis Avenue. His plans are completely contrary to the present topography, contrary to all setbacks and the character of the entire area. His plans bear zero resemblance to the neighborhood and doesn't respect the residents or the environment. He's quadrupling the plans, so when you see that triplex now, he wants to add the front is facing Windermere. He wants to do a building four times that size that's perpendicular to that. So instead of the entrance facing west, his entrances will be facing north, and he will be the first building in that entire area to do that. We have a Carolinian forest behind us. It's home to twenty-five percent of Canada's endangered species. Injuries were also on a dump, what was a previous dump, and that might explain some of the large setbacks. These lots are close to... They're about two-hundred-and-seventy-five deep originally, and this is going off script for me, so I don't want to lose too much time. But originally, I have the original plans from the developer going back to nineteen-fifty-five, and the ravine was supposed to be an extension of St. Olive's Road. However, they've maintained that ravine, marsh, and the Carolinian forest, as I say, which is about twenty-five percent species endangered. That is why we have the setbacks. We're also built on a dump, which is quite fragile. So for example, my foundation doesn't go your normal depth. It goes ten feet deep. That's because we're built on a dump. It's mostly sand, and we needed that depth of foundation for stability, so I digress. There will be injuries to... I wonder about the injuries to the previous dump, the streetscape, as well as the ravine and environment as a whole. Mr. Cho's plans contravene all bylaws to the extreme and ignore... Sorry, my notes are messy. Are ignoring entirely really what's going on there. He's minimizing the fact that we have high density. We have triplexes, duplexes, purpose-built. We have apartment buildings, cooperative rentals, cooperative ownership. They all have large setbacks where they start at Queen, where the Catskill Pond is, and they... It's like a triangle, so it's very wide setbacks at the beginning of that triangle, close to Queen Street, and then it tapers into a, you know, a point at the roundabout. There's a reason, and they don't understand the history. All the residents I've had the pleasure of speaking to by foot on my own time are vehemently opposed to this proposal. There is currently a... And many of them didn't get notice. I'm not sure why. And there is right now a petition circulating. So far, I've only spoke to one resident, one, who is... Didn't care, and quote, she says, "I'm not going to be around much longer because I'm in my eighties, so I don't want to take the time to object to this," end of quote. I've written the Carolinian Coalition. I've written two other environmental groups, but because this was... I got... I didn't receive my notice in the mail, and it was very short notice. I'm waiting for their responses. I can speak to the variances one by one if I have... If there's time left.
You're starting to... You're really winding down here, so...
Okay. So history shows that Mr. Cho has tended toward transgression of rules. He bought the building, which had been renovated top to bottom, inside it out, and fully landscaped it. Since his ownership in 2013, it has steadily deteriorated. He has not done his duties as a landlord, and tenants have expressed their frustration. So I have no reason to think that by adding four hundred percent, which is not a variance, and as I said, I could speak to each variance, which he's transgressed, not minor, but to double and extreme, to completely ignoring the variances. And as I say, him putting a perpendicular, it's not just about shadows and soft scape, it's also about privacy, but he will destroy the entire cityscape of that area.
Okay, ma'am. I apologize. I know you've got a lot to say, but I'm going to have to cut you off there.
Yes.
All right. Any questions, Phil?
So some of the issues that you raised are construction issues, things like foundations and that sort of thing. That's not actually what we're here to deal with today. That would... If the city needs a geotechnical report before approving a building permit, they'll ask for once to make sure the foundations are strong, that will be done. And then, a lot of your comments were, you know, these are large variances in terms of numbers. We can see the numbers, and that's only... That's not really how a variance is considered as minor or not minor. It's more considered as an impact. So what I would like to hear is, because we've looked at these plans and we understand what is being proposed, how will those changes, the proposed changes to the variances, for instance, I think the big one that kind of deals with all and encompasses all the rest is the setback, so bringing this, you know, all the way forward. How will that impact you and your neighbors that live in this?
Well, I think it impacts not just me, but the community at large. First of all, it's in contravention to the entire cityscape and the way it's been designed. Everybody who's had added add-ons or changed their places, they've never changed or disregarded.
So for you, it's aesthetic and it's the neighborhood character?
It's not just aesthetic. What he's proposing is, there's five cars there now for three units, and some of the cars are away because they're on business. He wants to have thirteen units where there's not any parking now. So when I take pictures early in the morning, six, seven in the morning, Windermere, or sorry, Cohell and Ellis Gardens is completely jam-packed bumper-to-bumper with parked cars. All those buildings that have setbacks, they have front yards for their residence to plan. They also have visitor parking at the front, sometimes at the side and in the back. It's all surface. It can't go underground because of the previous dump and water tables. But they all have sufficient, lots of parking, and yet there's an overspill. He wants to put parking, basically, the entire strip of green space where I have green. We have a mutual drive.
Sorry to interrupt you again. I understand what the plans are. I'm wondering, are there going to be impacts on your life and those of your neighbors?
Absolutely, absolutely. Removal of green space, transgression over my mutual drive, lack of privacy, because he'll now... His new units, they'll be looking into our windows because it'll be perpendicular to... And then, of course, there's always the... I'm so used to having sun all day. There's the shadows as well. But more importantly, there's seniors, families, and children, hundreds every day, walking by on that sidewalk, and he's proposing no grass, no setback, just having five small parking spots. How do they plan on getting in and out?
Okay, I... No, thank you. That was more helpful. That did answer my question.
There's more too, but I know...
So I'm going to cut you off. I know you've got a lot to say.
Oh, yeah.
The only observation I was making is your property fronts onto the ravine?
So it's the back, and I'm going to speak in generalizations. I had a survey done years ago, so I could understand. So my property is two-hundred-and-seventy-seven feet long.
I know that... All I'm really interested in, so you're...
All our backs back onto the ravine.
Back onto the ravine, okay. That's all I really need to know. Thank you so much. Any further questions? Thank you very much for coming down. Unfortunately, we don't have time for your partner or colleague.
Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We can hear from the owner at 107 Cohill Drive, and they are virtual.
Good morning. Mr. Filkowitz.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Filkowitz is having difficulty in muting, so just...
Okay, there we go. Can you hear me now?
All right, sir. You name an address, please, sir.
Paul Filkowitz, 107 Cohell Drive.
And you have five minutes. Go ahead, sir. Did we lose him?
Hello?
Hello.
Sorry about that.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Paul Filkowitz, 107 Cohell Drive.
Yes, sir. Please, you've got five minutes.
Right. I don't have many comments. I just have an issue with the setback. I do think it's going to be inconsistent with neighborhood character. If you look to the diagram that's currently on the screen right now, you'll see that all the other ones are setback from a road a certain amount. This is going to jut, and it's going to look very odd in the streetscape view. Otherwise, and it is, you know, when you're doubling or tripling the size of the building, I do think it's not a minor adjustment. And my last point is that while he's offering six bicycle parking spots, he's not offering the maintenance facilities, and I'm just not sure why he wouldn't be doing if he's got the six parking spots. Those are it.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions? Nope. Sabrina, that's it. All right, let's bring back the agent. Mr. Azimovik.
Hi, thanks for letting me speak again. Honestly, I'm a little bit surprised by the commentary from 105 Cohill. Unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to meet with her. I did meet with the owner at 41 St. Olive's yesterday, actually. So we did meet yesterday. I explained the entire proposal to him, and he was quite supportive. In fact, he wrote me a letter of support last night, which was submitted to the COA, obviously, probably a little bit too late anyways. But if you can please take a look at, you know, if you can zoom in on the proposed site plan once again, I can just kind of speak about some of the items that were brought up by Ms. Harris. So back on that site plan. Yes, that one. So you can see 105 is actually drawn on that site plan just below at the bottom, so the three-story brick building is right underneath the dark gray box that 103 is. And you can see that both buildings are about the same size and rather small. Honestly, I'm not sure what to say about some of the commentary regarding, you know, Carolinian forests and such. We are outside that zone. We're building towards the street. We have nothing to do with the forest at the back. The only thing that we're going to be doing on this side, you can see on our site plan, we've got a couple of dash circles in the unit closest to the street. There's a couple of trees that do have to be taken out. We've already applied to urban forestry for that. A couple of the larger trees that are next door at the four-story building beside us, they do have to... They're going to need a little bit of a trim or pruning exercise there as well, because they're just massive, massive trees, and they're overreaching onto our property. You know, we're here to propose something that's not going to affect people. We're not here to propose something that's going to upset people in any way. We're looking for soft intensification in the city. I think we all know the difficulties when it comes to affordable housing, et cetera, and I think this is a perfect example of something that's, you know, not too high. It's a three-story building. It has ten units in it. It's on transit routes, et cetera. So from that perspective, I think this is one way that this city can actually finally start to provide affordable housing for people. I know change is not good. You know, if you're living next door, you're not going to be happy about that, but none of the comments that were brought up really deal with anything to do with the zoning issues, you know. Again, I can't... We're not affecting the forest at the back. I appreciate the feedback on the soil conditions. You know, we're going to obviously follow the procedures, and we're going to build proper footings and foundations, but from that perspective, it has nothing to do with what this committee is about. From how far forward we are, you can compare. Unfortunately, I didn't draw like the entire neighborhood, but if you take a look at how far our building sticks out, past that bend in the property line on the south side at unit number one, we're slightly past the bend. Now, if you go back to the aerial view of the neighborhood, the location map, yep, thank you, you can see where the bend in the property is basically right where the two much larger buildings are sticking out to. So yes, we're going to be... So, yes, we're gonna be slightly over what those buildings are at, but again, if we were to remove an entire bay of units, you're looking at a reduction of four units. At that stage, the project becomes unfeasible, and the owner will likely not-
No, sorry ma'am, your time is up.
Again, from a parking perspective, we tried to maximize as much parking as we could at the street. If you go back to the site plan, once again, you'll see the parking that's right up to the property line, not from a safety perspective, if there is a concern with cars going in and out. Again, the property line is off of the sidewalk, right, like there's quite a few feet before the cars, you know, would back up, I assume, back out to the left and then go forward, facing the road, facing the street. So, from that perspective, I think I've covered, you know, everything that's there. I cannot comment on the quality of the landlord, right, and how he's dealing with tenants, et cetera, that's really not our job here. But from our perspective, we're here to propose something, and from a shadow perspective, it's a three-story building, you know, we haven't done a shadow study, but I guarantee you, our building would not cast a shadow, you know, unless it's like a short winter day where the shadow's cast, and again, that'll be mostly on 105's front yard, not on their building. So, again, I'm not really sure how else I can, sort of, what else I can say about the commentary that was made just before me.
Okay, thank you, sir. Panel, any questions, or the agent? You, Phil?
The, part of the plan that I have the most trouble with are these five parking spots right at the front, and accordingly, along with that, the soft landscaping variance, because there, you know, it looks like there would be space to do better with soft landscaping if this weren't how you were dealing with that space. So, what's the rationale for the parking spots, as opposed to being closer to the required landscaping and soft landscaping?
Well, I think the rationale was that there's 13 units in here, not everyone's gonna be without a vehicle. I mean, we can see two or three vehicles there parked for the existing three units, and the idea was to add more parking, where, you know, I think the owner would be okay with a reduction of a couple of spots. One of those spots is actually designed to be a barrier-free spot, to match the barrier-free unit that we're proposing as well, so that's part of what's reduced it. And then, in addition to that, behind the parking spaces, we actually introduced a city's, or a sidewalk that connects to the city sidewalk, to prevent people, or limit people from walking onto the roads. So, potentially, we could remove the sidewalk behind the parking to reduce the hardscape and increase the softscape behind there, but again, we're not talking about massive numbers of people going up and down this driveway, so from a safety perspective, I do not see that being a concern. So, if the committee's willing to accept that, we can increase the softscape at the front by reducing the sidewalk that is right on the back of the parking spaces there.
And the three existing parking spaces, where are they located on site?
I think currently, they are located, they're not really technically, if you go back to the existing site plan, or even the survey.
There are cars parking sort of alongside the driveways, is what it looks like?
They do, yeah, yeah, they have like a bit of a lay-by right there, you can kind of see it right at the front there, so keep going to the right, yep, you can see a bit of a road widening there, and that's where I think they're parking, their two, three cars that they have.
Was there any thought to putting parking in the rear instead?
Again, we're getting into conservation area, right, so there is a green line on our site plan, it's the extent of conservation, so for us to propose, it's rather steep back there, it's rather green back there, we'd like to leave that space for the tenants, that they could go back there and, you know, enjoy the nature.
Would, do you have the owner with you? Would they consider maybe removing the front parking spot and turning that into landscaping? I mean, from my perspective, removing the sidewalk, which is an amenity, is not the right way to improve the soft landscaping, removing one or two of the spaces might be.
Yeah, no, you know, I think the owner would be open to that, unfortunately, he is out of the country at the moment, but he wouldn't be able to respond to me right now, but I do not see him, you know, being against this. It's more of a convenience item for the tenants, like we're trying to prevent some of the things that Ms. Harris was talking about, right? So, we wanna make sure that there aren't issues with cars being parked all over the place and blocking her access, because it is a shared driveway. So, we're, you know, we're more than open to doing so, but again, I think it would be a negative move as far as long-term use is concerned.
Okay, or another alternative might be to pave some of that with permeable paving. If the owner's out of the country, are you in a position to help the committee out as to how you could improve the soft landscaping?
I think the permeable paving is an absolute perfect solution to this, right? So, now, we're gonna deal with stormwater management without losing the convenience for the tenants. So, if the committee's okay with that, I'm 100% open to basically providing that as permeable pavers, and we could even potentially suggest some of the roots, you know, main route that's in there, although, that's a shared drive, that's something that would have to be discussed with, obviously, the owner 105, based on the fact that it's a shared drive, so we can't really do permeable paver for half the drive and ash for the other half. So, but I'm totally open to doing permeable pavers for the six parking spaces, or five parking spaces that are shown there.
Okay, anyone else?
I would, my observation is, I'm not as fussed about the soft landscaping, only because I know this area quite well, it's all sand, so the permeability of the existing landscape, and if you look at the quantum, you're looking at 192 square meters, which is still pretty significant, so maybe the permeable pavers is a reasonable alternative?
Yeah, it's a bit about the permeability, but it's also just a bit the desirability of a site plan that has a lot of parking right up against the street, and so I'm kind of using the soft landscaping as a proxy for improving that feature.
Yeah, I think Ms. Harris made the point, and I think it's true, I know this area quite well. Because there's a series of apartment dwellings all the way down to the south, there is a lot of overflow and parking on the street, and I think it would, you know, having five spots will not solve that problem, but reducing it, I think, will just make that problem worse.
Okay. Anyways, any other further questions? Okay, let's take it into committee. Who wants to take, Phil, since you asked the questions?
Sure, my question sort of voiced my concerns. I understand, certainly if I were, I have a lot of sympathy, or rather, I should say, for the residents of 105 Cohill Drive, and the individual who presented here today, and the others who wanted to. This will be a significant change to the property adjacent to them, but from a planning perspective, I'm not, it's such a unique lot, the lot frontage depth, I'm also by this area quite often, I've always wondered why it was like that, it actually is sort of incongruous, so doing something to bring things closer to the street, I don't think would be out of keeping. Like, a four-meter setback is much more common than a 40-meter setback. But, yeah, my concern is, I'm not enamored with a site plan that has parking right at the street, I do recognize, if you look at the adjacent development, that a lot of the apartments to the south have that, but I'm not sure about encouraging it, but other than that, I find it supportable.
Okay. Do you want to turn that into a motion, sir? Oh, Peter, did you have comments?
I wouldn't mind some comments.
Sorry.
No, thanks. I don't know, I have a lot of concerns with this application, and normally, this type of intensification project is something that I wholeheartedly support, but I'm just finding the dimensions of this lot not really working well with what's being proposed. Part of it is site plan issues, I think, that Phil mentioned, that the parking in the front, I don't think is a great solution, I know it exists on this street. I think that there is, there's the opportunity for a really good plan here, but the, and again, I agree, like, these setbacks are, they're not urban setbacks, they're, it's an odd part of the city. The bigger apartment buildings to the south, or east, depending on how you're looking at it, I think they do have larger setbacks on the side, I think that this is a lot of building on a narrow lot, and because it's an apartment building, there's been not much, like, that 1.5-meter landscape strip, I think, is important, they can only really do that on the one side because they've got a drive on the other, but I find that they're not really trying to address the impacts of an apartment building on the neighbors, and the landscaping number is very big, but I would almost prefer to see this go through rezoning to address the site plan issues. Personally, almost it would be better to have redevelopment of a couple of these lots together, I think, just because of the length and the depth, and the kind of impact, potential impact that might result in.
Okay. Anyone else?
No comments? I'm, I'm gonna take a contrary view, again, I'm pretty familiar with this area, it strikes me that there doesn't appear to be a particularly good reason for a 40-meter setback on this site, given the density that has been already constructed, several apartment buildings, both on Windermere and on Cohill. My observation is that it almost seems like a waste of developable space, given the context of the site. It is walkable to Bluer, it's walkable to the lake shore, it has Rennie Park right in behind, lots of amenities, or schools, it's the kind, it's not surprising that you're seeing apartment buildings pop up in this area because of its proximity to a lot of important amenities. The variances, in my view, you know, again, soft landscaping is a little bit light, but with some permeable pavers, and I do know the subterranean, or the soil conditions in here, it drains really well, so I'm not as concerned in this instance that the shortage of soft landscaping will result in a lot of overland flow, it just gets sucked right into the ground. So, the other variances, I mean, it's really just the front setback and the soft landscaping, which, given the context of this site, I find minor, so I think it's a supportable application. I mean, this is the kind of site, the three or four in a row which have the large front yards, I mean, feel like they are underutilizing those sites. Okay, so, anyone else? No? All right, then, I'll look to someone for a motion.
Yeah, I'm just still struggling with the site plan issue, that gives me pause. I wonder if one of my colleagues wants to put forward a motion, or otherwise, maybe we can come out of committee and I can see if the proponent would be willing to agree to a condition, perhaps, to screen the parking lot with some sort of greenery?
Screen it from?
The sidewalk.
From the public sidewalk?
From the public sidewalk.
We can do that, before we do that, does Gary or Nazella, do you have any thoughts on this one?
It's good that several members know the area well, so I'm really just listening and sort of responding to that.
Okay. Nazella?
Well, I kind of like the design, but it will, this particular, it's like, well, it's a very long, deep lot, and we have a lot of apartment on the south area, and I think regarding the massing is not too high or too big for that area, but only it will affect definitely the neighbors on the left side, it will definitely affect their privacy, so, but in terms of the setback, I have no problem, and then, I agree with the comment you mentioned regarding the landscaping, because that area is very close to that big park, so it won't have a problem, and then, when they change the driver to permeable paper, that will help, so that will be my comment.
Okay. Phil, did you want to put that question to the agent?
Sure, let's-
All right, let's go out of committee. Phil, do you want to?
Yeah, my, so my question is whether you would agree to a condition to have a strip of landscaping between the sidewalk and the first parking space, with something to screen the parking. So, the parking is right now, right on the lot line, so it would require either the removal of a space, or the resizing of a space, or the resizing of the walkway, so I'm not, but that's the request, whether you'd be agreeable to something that we could include as a condition, so it would be perhaps a half meter, I think would be sufficient, a half meter of soft landscaping adjacent to the property line.
Yeah, we're not opposed to that at all, sorry.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, we need to be careful about reducing parking spaces because that may incur additional variances that are not before us today, so then it would have to be a deferral, but the agent can speak to that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not opposed to putting a green barrier, the only issue I see, as you had mentioned, that the barrier, you know, we are right up to the property line, so from that perspective, the size of the sidewalk that we're proposing, once again, get us to the barrier-free lift, to take us into the basement barrier-free unit, that's the only concern I have there. So, for us to reduce anything, the only thing that could potentially be solved in some sort of ways, the barrier-free parking spaces, right now showing at 3.9, where a standard one is 2.9, at the permit stage, my fear is, is that if I reduce that parking spot to a regular spot, that I don't end up with a variance on requirement for a barrier-free spot. That was, that's the only concern I have, and I think that would be a perfect solution, if we showed all five at 2.9, and took that extra meter and basically created a green buffer between parking and our property line, but I'm not sure if that would cause any issues from zoning and also permit perspective, because they may ask us for a barrier-free spot for the barrier-free unit.
Okay.
So, I'm in your hands as to whether that would be something that you would agree to, to being put in a motion, recognizing that there might be a risk as to another variance, or whether you would not agree to that, and then we'll come back into committee.
Yeah, no, I mean, is it possible to put a motion in where we provide a green space between the sidewalk and the property line? I know that's, you know, a property that belongs to the city, but we've done similar things in the past through permissions granted by various departments, you know, if we provided a half a meter.
I think we're sort of, we're dancing around this issue, and I don't think there's a resolution, frankly, that we can deal with today, so we'll take you at your word, Phil, if that's okay, take you at your word that you'll, you know, employ best efforts to see if you can find a path to screen that, but the loss of an accessible parking space, I think, isn't in the best interest.
So, let's go back into committee. Phil, did you want to, or does someone else want to make a motion?
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable moving it.
Okay, then I'll look to Nazella.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair, I think this project have a lot of good potential, but still have some issues that the applicant needs to address. My motion will be to defer this application, so that the applicant have more time on whether go to site plan approval or rezoning, or just deal with all the landscape issue.
Okay, motion to, Ms. West, to defer, do I have a second there?
I'll second that, sir.
Seconded by Mr. McKay, all in favor? Opposed? That motion fails. That motion fails.
I would just make the comment, I do appreciate the sentiment, but if the applicant hasn't asked for a deferral, I I just am not in favor in that situation.
Right, so I'll look for another motion. Peter?
Thanks, Chair. I'm going to move a motion to to refuse the application. And it's it's not because I don't think it's overdevelopment. I think there are just significant site plan issues that that could be addressed that haven't been addressed. There are small things that, like the bike parking, the location of the vehicular parking. This is a site that can definitely handle intensification, but I I just think in its current form, from my perspective, it's not supportable.
Okay, motion by Mr. Reed to refuse, do I have a second there?
I
Seconded by Mr. McKay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay, the application is refused. All right, we move on. Item number 10 was deferred. We go to item number 11. 38 Ellis Avenue, this is an application to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a complete third-story addition with a partial fourth-story addition. Also to construct a front third-story balcony with a canopy and a front fourth-story terrace. Committee has before to copy a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, three photographs of the subject property, an arborist report. We have staff reports from Transportation Review, the TRCA, and from Metrolinks. There is correspondence and opposition from Swansea Area Ratepayer Association.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item. We'll unmute Maxim.
Hello.
Hello, good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Name and address, please, sir.
My name is Maxim Ifimov. Address for the record, 40 Hawthorne Road, Etobica, M9R1P3.
Okay. Sir, the Ratepayers Association has written a letter in opposition. So maybe just a very, very brief overview of what you're proposing.
We are proposing in addition to existing single-family dwelling. So we are just building up, not extending to the rear. And basically that's it. So we just building an addition on top of the existing house.
Okay, that's it.
And this is single-family, one dwelling. Not, no secondary suites.
Okay, we'll go to questions then. Does anyone have any questions, Peter?
Thanks, Chair. Transportation has requested that you that you narrow your driveway to be, the existing driveway width and curb cut to 3.47 meters, are you okay with that condition?
Yes, we are okay with that condition to retain the existing driveway, not to extend it.
Okay, thanks. So for, just for clarity, are you fine if you if we amend that in the variance number five that's being proposed? The maximum permitted?
Variance number five, I understand according to staff report, Transportation. Yes, they don't approve that and they're okay with everything else. Yes, we are okay if variance number five not going to be approved.
Okay, so you're amending variance number five to be requesting 3.47 meters?
Yes, because it is existing.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Excuse me, all right, let's take it into committee. Peter?
I can take it, yeah, sure, thanks. The the that was the only concern I had with this application is the driveway width. I think that that then created the front yard landscaping deficiency more than it had to be. So I I think in its current form, it's acceptable. It's mostly staying with the existing footprint. And and I think that the variances are now minor, so I I would move approval of the application as amended.
Okay, motion by Mr. Reed to approve, seconded by Mr. Gosh, all in favor? You have your approval, thank you. Move on to item number 12. 115 Walnut Avenue, this is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story detached dwelling by constructing a rear second-story addition with a deck and a complete third-story addition with a front deck and a rooftop deck. There will be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot. Committee has before to copy a plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revise site plan, floor plans and elevations received April the 4th. Two photographs of the subject property, we have staff reports from Metrolinks, from community planning and from urban forestry. There is correspondence and concern from 797 Walnut Avenue and 833 King Street West. There is correspondence and opposition from 193 and 197 Niagara, 107 99, 111 and 99 Walnut. And a 30 signature petition in opposition from residents of 833 King Street West. Good afternoon, sir.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we have the agent here in person. We also have two registered speakers in opposition here in person.
Andrew Trotter, 81 St. Clarence Avenue, I'm the agent designer.
Hey, sir, we have some people who want to speak to this item, so we'll need a presentation.
Sure. So this is a proposed two-unit building, it's right on Stanley Park, it's a gorgeous location. I spent quite a bit of time back and forth with city planning about this. They wanted us to try and increase the amount of units in it. I did, in in our conversations, I explained the code issues of the fire escapes to to increase the egress from the additional units was really almost unachievable. If we start with the two units and we can get that, the the single exit for two units combined at the two-unit level, we can add a third unit later and reduce a lot of extra cost for the additional exits. That that seemed to be the plan. City planning is in favor of this, in fact, quote was, I have no problem with this with the planner. The the building owner plans, he has an existing tenant, I understand, that wants to move into the upper level already. I I haven't heard that this would ever be a short-term rental. I understand this to be two long-term rentals. And as far as the bylaws go, the third floor itself is only at 11.79 meters, that is not a variance. The north wall, if the north wall was brought in 10 inches, we could avoid the side back, the the side yard setback of the variance. The decks on the second level and the third level, if we brought those in a couple feet on one side and three feet on the other, we could avoid those variances. So really what we're left with, the rooftop deck is not a variance. So really what we're left with, with a few minor alterations, to keep the design, so we don't have these little gaps on the side of the building, that's all it is. And then for the third floor, we're really, the thing that we really want to ask for is the rooftop access. And then the rooftop access, which is seven feet by eight inches by, I think, 13 feet nine inches. And what we want to do, and it's common downtown, especially this type of a neighborhood, it's sort of mixed, there's the apartments, there's the houses, it's on the park. The rear deck faces back into the lane, the the third floor deck faces right out onto the park. I don't see any of those decks as a privacy issue, the the rooftop deck is inset. And the Sorry, just going to get to one thing. Yeah, I forgot what I was going to say there, sorry. But the, and then the tree, oh yeah, sorry, the rooftop deck, what we did with the rooftop deck, if you look at if you look at what page was it on? Maybe it's on the rooftop. Oh yeah, here we are. If you look at the rooftop deck on A6, yeah. So what we did was, we brought that back because there's two apartment buildings on the north side, and one apartment building is quite close to our building. So we pushed the rooftop deck back and we spun it north and south to make it the narrowest part. So that is on the corner of the north of the northwest building. And then the narrow part faces the the northeast building ahead, that's north of us. But it it's very far back. I I don't see this this small access as as really as a visual obstruction. And and we've certainly given a lot of consideration to its placement, whereas we could have put the staircase up to directly over the stairs. In, you see, in in on on A4, if you go to A4, you can see that the stairs from second to third level are very much more to the west. So we've pushed that staircase back so that we're not creating any obstruction on that closer building, that was the plan. And then as far as urban forestry goes, urban forestry did not ask for a deferral in this. We have no intention of hurting the tree. We do have a report, the report just came to me this morning, it's a little raw. I did send it into COA staff this morning, they said they couldn't upload it, but I said I was going to mention that that I had sent it. And the report clearly states that the tree is to be preserved.
Okay, thank you, sir, just going to cut you off there. Panel, any burning questions, we have some folks who want to speak to it?
No, thanks.
Good afternoon.
I was going to say good morning.
Yeah.
Yes, we've made it to the afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Chair and the panel members. The name is Lisa Barnes, allies at A B A R N E S, and I am a resident of 20 years and an owner of 833 King Street West. So this notification came to us via some of the neighbors in the building and some of the people along the side streets. Let me put into a little bit of context, since I have limited time. And 833 is the actual condo building, it's two sections to it, one is six floors with a total of 52 units, including our three-floor building that is all connected, that became a MTC 1196 in 1997. The building that Mr. Trotter was just referring to is a heritage building that was deemed by the mayor of Toronto in 2007. So we're very protective over that space. We face the south side, there is 28 units that face south. And there is an impact on the majority of the units from the second floor up to the top of the sixth floor. So that is a bit more of the context. Then, of course, we are flanked by Walnut Avenue, which is a one-way street that runs north, and then we have Niagara Street on the other side. And then the proper terminology for the laneway is the South King West Laneway that we share with the marketing studio on Niagara Street and also our neighbors at 115 Walnuts. So having lived in the building for 20 years, I am representing the residents. You, as mentioned, there were numerous opposition letters sent, we have 30 signatures, which is nice to have this part. So let me just talk about this tree. So first of all, on the floor plans that we received, when you look at the site plan, the very back northeast corner, the famous tree. So through research, and we've done extensive reading of all the documents provided, urban forestry, et cetera. That is not in fact a maple tree, that is actually a rare American elm tree. The, there's an indication that it's a 23-inch maple. So we did some measurements, that is actually the trunk from chest level is 80 inches. And then on the other side, so the southwest side of that building at 115, their neighbor is 11 Walnut, sorry, 111 Walnut. They do have a private, a tree on private property that is a maple, and it extends up and over the top of the existing third floor. And that trunk circumference is 56 inches. So that being said, through other reviews, the rare and very healthy, so it's avoided disease, and it's also over 150 years old. The top canopy is now, the top of it is reaching the top of the fourth floor of our building, so it's almost at the fifth floor now. And our floors are 10 feet in height, so that's pretty substantial. The canopy itself spans across two very wide condos to give you some perspective as to the type of tree that we're actually dealing with. Then when we refer to the south side of the canopy, half of it is actually directly above what is currently the ceiling of the seventh or the second floor, because the third floor structure is half the building. So that is more than what is indicated in their plans to do some minor pruning, that is basically cutting half of the tree. So there's that, you have the issue with that tree, there's an issue with the other tree on Walnut at 111 Walnut Street. And then we have the laneway, so that is a fire route. It is no parking, and it is already incredibly narrow, so we do have challenges with that. That is shared with a perpendicular roadway that connects all the neighbors from Walnut and Niagara Street to their garages that are in back, private lane, private garages. Currently, they already have a struggle to be able to turn that corner from the fire route laneway to get down to their garage doors. So now if this proposed structure with the variances takes place, that is going to extend to the back of the property for 115 Walnut, making that a more impossible turn to make, and also for safety. The other issue is that, yes, the height is currently being referred to at the maximum amount. The request is now to have an increased height and a change in the the variance, the zoning, so that they can have that rooftop terrace. We oppose the rooftop terrace. The other concern is that you have the two decks, sorry, I am out of time.
You have run out of time, ma'am, I'm sorry. Is there anything you'd like to conclude with?
Well, there has been deferrals from urban forestry, and the tree has not been properly addressed. There was no consultation with an arborist prior to the plans being done. There is a second level back deck that was mentioned, and according to the plans, the back deck extends directly across the back of the building without any indication how that's going to impact.
All right, thank you. Panel, any questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Chair, we do have another speaker.
Hang on a sec, Mr. Trotter. Hi.
Hello.
Name and address, please, ma'am.
Kathy Campbell, 107 Walnut.
Are you, is your, is that mic on?
Am I on?
Maybe just scoot a little closer to it.
I'm a little short.
Yeah.
Is that better?
That's a little better, thank you.
Okay, hi. Yeah, Kathy Campbell, 107 Walnut. So I live three doors down from this property, and we're all home, single-family dwellings. Just for context, and I think you have quite a number of letters from my neighbors. So I'm sort of talking about this as well as supporting the condo building. And I really just wanted to read my letter. So yes, this is my formal objection, along with my neighbors, to the minor variance at 115 Walnut. Dear members of the committee, you know my name, Kathy Campbell, 107 Walnut. I've lived there for 17 years. I'm writing as a concerned citizen and resident of Stanley Park and Walnut Avenue. We have a wonderful neighborhood and community to strongly oppose the minor variance application submitted for this property. It's a commercially zoned building located on what is otherwise a peaceful predominantly residential block. The application as presented does not represent a minor variance. It constitutes a It constitutes a significant structural expansion and reconfiguration of the existing property with broad implications for the surrounding neighborhood. I respectfully request that the committee consider the following points. This is not a minor variance. The scope of the proposed changes, which is an extensive addition and expansion of the structure, goes far beyond what could reasonably be defined as minor. This is a major redevelopment and should be treated as such. Encroachment and access concern. If there's an increase in the depth of property, as Lisa said, this is restricting an already very narrow laneway and access for the neighbors to their garages. It's already difficult. It's very tight. The parking pad at 115 Walnut is undersized currently and does not support large vehicles. It already protrudes, they already protrude into the laneway and create this difficulty for the neighbors to get into their garages. The tree health is, tree number one, incorrectly labeled as a maple, incorrectly measured. Why is that? Species of significant ecological and aesthetic value. It's a beautiful tree. Tree number two, mature maple at 111 Walnut. If we can have a look at the shots, the pictures that I took of the trees. There's... No, that's the tree in the front. Yeah, okay, so there's the elm. Look how close that already is to the... Is that the elm? To the building. I mean, it literally is growing into the building. You can see the bark of the tree. It's a very healthy tree. Any addition, anything going up? Please define pruning. Okay? You agree you're going to have to hack away at a lot of that tree. I just, we're very concerned about the tree. And offering compensation for any damage of that tree is unacceptable. Same for 111 Walnut. If you can pull the shot... Yeah, I'm running out of time. This is a density reduction issue as well. It was three units, now it's two. Runs counter to broader city goals around housing availability and rental supply. Noise from the larger decks. Don't forget, this is a commercially zoned building. It's absolved from the Airbnb-type city short-term residential regulations. Noise and guest control is a big concern on our peaceful street. There's the maple in the front. It goes way up and right over where they want to build the... Put on the top addition. So, yeah, intended use of these units is key. Absence... Okay, so there has been a longstanding issue with the blatant absence of maintenance on this property. Garbage control, cleanliness, standard of care have been neglected. You saw the parking pad photo. It's a dump and is very rarely cleaned up. This proposed addition to increase the size is going to exacerbate these programs.
I am going to ask you to wrap up, please.
Okay, so... And we won't be steamrolled. Mr. Trotter tried to bully us out in the hall earlier. We will not be steamrolled on that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Panel, any questions, the speaker? Okay. We have the agent back now.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify that quick.
Just before you start talking, just sit, yeah. Make sure you're on mic.
I'm on the mic, thanks. I met in the hall. I asked if we could talk about the variances. They kept talking about the tree. I heard about them being corporate people and that all the neighbors were against me. The conversation was not fruitful. It needed to end. That's all that happened, okay? I've done 300 of these. I've never been a bully. Anyways, first of all, it's two units. And in the back, there's two parking. There's no changes. It's not legal parking, but two cars can fit back there. The building is not being extended. The foundation where the tree is is going to stay exactly the same. The second floor and the third floor do not impede the tree. And this is going to be dealt with with urban forestry. It's not up to me. It's up to urban forestry. The rooftop terrace is not a variance. There's, you know, I like, all I can say really is that the major, like, saying, there's no extension of the building. This is all the same footprint. We're just going up. This is normal in Toronto. And like I say, the rooftop access is what we need to get out onto a deck that is not a variance. It's acceptable to have. And there's no talk of having Airbnb. And this is not zoned commercial. This is zoned apartments. It's a residential zoning. We're doing what the zoning says. And we're here, I believe, for a minor variance, for something, a beautiful place on the park that has a nice, beautiful view they're trying to capitalize on. I don't see this as a privacy issue with the neighbors. They have privacy issues from the apartment. We've worked to avoid obstructions with the rooftop terrace. We've given that consideration. And planning is in support of this. And that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Panel, any questions, the agent? Peter?
Thanks, Jared. Just one about the rooftop deck that's being proposed. I know it's limited to a portion of the roof, but I'm not seeing any fencing or... What's the barrier between the deck and the rest of the rooftop?
Would you like a five-foot privacy wall?
I don't know. I'm just wondering like how it's going to...
Well, right now, we have railing. It is set back. We would have to have a four-foot railing.
Okay.
That would be, you know, building code. That would be required.
Okay.
If you wanted to add a condition. The thing is, up there, I would have to say that because of, you know, the wind and the size, I would say that we could, on the south side, we could increase the setback to six feet from four feet now. And we could make that a condition. And that would certainly take care of two things. It would take care of not having to have the privacy wall and any issues of privacy, which I haven't read that people have been concerned about the privacy. They talk about the tree, and they talk about the extension of the building, which isn't happening. It's the same length. And they talk about the size of the third floor, which isn't even, we're not even here for the third floor. It's not part of our application. So...
All right.
And these are things that I would try to discuss in the hall and say, look, is this an issue? Maybe we can adjust this, right? But if, we could say a condition on the south side of the rooftop deck is pushed back six feet from the property line instead of four.
From the rear line.
Not from the rear line, from the south side. There's no rear line.
From the south side, right.
Yeah, from the south side. And it's just that one corner. The rest of the deck is so back, so far back, that it's, you're not going to have, you're not going to have people looking, be able to look over the roof anyways. But if we just push that six feet to make sure there's... And even if we had to do the angle, we just said there's a six-foot setback on the south side. We could work with that.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else? Gary?
To this point, has there been any kind of private arborist report or advice?
Yes, sir.
Relative to that elm tree call?
George Squire from Brightleaf, who I use constantly for all my arborist reports. He's a very good arborist. He did provide the report. I sent it this morning to staff. Staff told me that I couldn't present the report here at the committee, but I said that I would speak of it at the committee. And urban forestry is requesting it. And we take it seriously. And I've been here before about urban forestry. And as I've said, I was a member of the Green Party Toronto Danforth 2018. I am a tree hugger. I don't want to hurt trees. So, you know, if there's something that I feel that tree's in danger, that would upset me, too. And I feel empathy to the people that have these difficulties and the change. I feel empathy. I'm not in business to upset people. I like people to be happy. But this is change.
All right, sir. Thank you. I think you've answered the question. Gary, you okay?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any further questions? Nope. All right, let's take it in the committee.
I look at the variances and the location, and to me, they're quite minor. It's creating two large units in a very downtown neighborhood. It's significantly lower in scale than the apartments to the north, transitioning towards the ones to the south. Even when I look at the rooftop deck, it doesn't really extend as far as the yards. And so I wouldn't even see a need to put in a condition to reduce it. To me, that's, it's pretty straightforward and approvable.
Anyone else? Peter?
Yeah, I would agree, Phil. For me, the only, my main concern was the tree in the rear, and I think that's everyone's. And I, yeah, I understand that it's being mislabeled, but I think that with an urban forestry condition, that they'll review this. And we'll have to sign off on anything that happens to the tree. That gives me some comfort. So I would support it, too.
I don't think urban forestry asked for a condition on this.
Yeah, they do.
In the late, in the latest comments, they did, yeah.
Just as, notwithstanding his offer to set it back, do you want some privacy screening on the south side?
I don't think it's necessary. I was asking that question just because there were no barriers shown in the plan. I just thought someone falling off the roof. But no, it was more just out of curiosity. I think, as Phil noted, it is set back in from all sides. And there are balconies just on the adjacent building to the north as well. I think it's, I think it's fine, particularly with that tree being, providing a lot of privacy as well.
Okay. All right, anyone else? We lose Missoula?
Okay, I will move to approve this application with forestry condition number two and no other conditions. Oh, and the planning, yes, and the planning condition to tie it to the plans as suggested by planning.
All right. Motion by Mr. Gosh to approve those conditions. Seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? You have your approval. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Move to item number 13. 35 Borden Street. This is an application to alter the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached dwelling by constructing a front-ground-floor canopy, a front basement walkout, a rear-two-story addition with a ground-level deck and stairs, and a second-story balcony, as well as a complete third-story addition with a rear balcony. There'll be a total of two residential dwelling units on this lot, and the existing rear-one-story ancillary garage will be maintained and unaltered. Committee has afforded copy of plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. Revised site plan, floor plans and elevations, received April the 9th. Two photographs of the subject property. Covering letter from the agent. We have a staff report from urban forestry. We have correspondence in concern from 28, 27, 31, 29, 37, 56, 27, and 62 Borden Street. We have correspondence in opposition from 44, 33, 57, 27, Borden Street, 151 Lippincott, and again, 25 Borden Street.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. And we have... Sorry, seven registered speakers for this item.
All right. Okay, Mr., do we have the agent?
Yes.
Name and address, please, sir.
Yes, sir. Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Hong Tsing Tsin. I'm living in Two Longevity Road in Brampton. I'm the agent on behalf of the owner of 45 Winkies.
Okay, sir. You will need a presentation. We have a number of people that want to speak to this item. You have five minutes.
Yes, sir.
Is there something on, sorry, before you start, is there something on in the background? We're getting a little bit of feedback.
Actually, I'm inside the car because the internet doesn't really work today. That's why I hope to use my car. Probably that's a problem.
Okay, then just speak loudly and clearly, please.
Okay, sure. Yeah, the owner bought this house last year. It was a two-and-a-half-story semi-detached house. They wanted to add, add, expand this building to a three-story semi-detached duplex. Basically, they are going to have two dwelling units, one unit in the basement. That will be for renting purpose. And the other unit actually on the ground, second, and third floor. Owner would like to occupy the above-ground dwelling unit. So to accommodate this addition and extension, basically, we would like to request four minorance for this application. The first application, actually, the first minorance really related to the rear yard of self-lack giving. Currently, it is, the rear yard, because it's covered by concrete pavement, and we are proposing a permeable pavement. It's going to be a little bit improvement on this one. So the second where we like to have actually is regarding the front yard of self-lack giving. So currently, the self-lack giving from the building to the sidewalk, roughly 35 square meters. And because we are proposing a new basement walkout, so second self-lack giving going to reduce by more or less five square meters to 29.5 square meters. And the third where really we want to have a building depth increase by one foot. Yeah, the reason behind that is because we want to more or less match the adjoining number of building depths. And the current building depth actually is 18 meters. And the increase will be by one foot to 18.3 meters. And we are also proposing a new canopy to try to cover the new basement walkout. The projection will be 1.5 meters beyond the platform. So that's all the minorance we are requesting. All the building setbacks, building height will be in compliance with the building code. Oh, no, sorry, with the zoning by law. Yeah, I think that's my provision.
Okay, thank you, sir. We have a number of people who want to speak to this item. Many, if not most, have raised the concern about the number of people going to be living here. You're suggesting it's a two-family unit or two-unit development? But, 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 hang on a second. But many of the bedrooms have en suite bathrooms. So can you just address that rate at the top, whether this is going to be a multi-person dwelling or is it a two-unit dwelling?
So it's going to be a two-unit dwelling. In the basement, basically, we have three bedrooms. That's going to be renting out. And the ground floor, actually, we just have one bedroom there. And we have a huge living space. I believe it's more than five hundred square feet. On the second floor, we have, we have three bedrooms with... Also, we have a family room there just for family provision. And the third floor, we also have three bedrooms. So if you think about it, we have three stories. We have seven bedrooms. So if you think about it, we have three stories. We have seven bedrooms. I think that's not really abnormal, considering the size of the addition. And also, because the family, actually, they have, there's three generations of family here, right? So basically, the owner, the old couple there, and also their daughter, and their family will live with them. I think they want to have, they want to have adequate bedrooms and living space for their family purpose.
All right. Maybe we can go to our first speaker?
Through you, Mr. Chair. There are a number of speakers here in person, so I'd ask that you come up one by one to the podium. Sure, that's fine. She can, she can start. Next seat over, thank you.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Is your button on there? Red button on?
Hi, Mohammed.
All right, welcome. If we could have your name and address, please.
My name is Inga Fauley. My address is 37 Borden Street.
Great, and you're, who's with you?
I'm her daughter, Sarah.
Okay, same address?
No, I'm just sitting here in case there's a problem.
All right. Go ahead, ma'am. You have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. Thank you to the members of the committee and to my neighbors who are here today in person or online. My name is Inga Fauley. For the past 40 years, I have lived at 37 Borden Street, the semi-attached to 35 Borden. I live alone. I have renovated my ground floor to be accessible for me and hope to stay here for the rest of my life with the assistance of home care services I receive from West Neighborhood House. As I explained in my written submission, I am urging you to deny this application for two reasons. Number one, the proposal will create an illegal 10-unit multi-tenant unit. House, sorry. Number two, the proposal will impinge on the quality of my life. Let me explain. First and foremost, the application misrepresented the intended use of the building. The application claims that there will be only two residential dwelling units in the house, a single-family home and a separate basement apartment. But as you can see with my slides, the plans actually show 10 enclosed bedrooms, each with their own full bathroom.
So we have slides that we sent before. The slide one is the basement?
Sure. Hang on a sec. We'll pull that up.
Can you pause the clock?
Yeah, please, yeah.
Where's?
Thank you. Slide one should be the basement. Yes, thank you.
All right. Do you want to keep going?
Yes. So just say three in the basement?
Three in the basement. Next slide. One on the ground floor. Next slide, please. Three on the second floor. Next slide. Three on the third floor. Does this look like two dwelling units to you? To me and my neighbors, it looks like a 10-unit multi-tenant house or an Airbnb. As explained in my written submission, the owners visited me weeks ago with a card claiming that this would be, this is the card, Mickey Mouse, and with a $50 cake certificate, which I have since returned. Explained to me, in my, oh, sorry, that this would be their family home. This is what the people said at the door. I was delighted. Last week, I called the number they provided in this card to hear their side of the story. The owner's son claimed he had no idea about the en suite bathrooms and that he would speak to the designer and call me back. He has yet to do that. Now, I want to make one thing very clear. I'm not arguing against having a multi-tenant home next door to me. I have renovated my basement. It's a legal basement. I've often rented to students because I'm close to the U of T. But as you know, multi-tenant housings require special license inspections and fire safety measures. There have been tragic deaths in our neighborhood due to fires in unlicensed rooming houses. If you approve these renovations without requiring the owner to get the proper license, regular inspections, and fire safety measures, it could endanger my safety as well as the safety of future tenants and other neighbors. A secondary concern is that the proposed rear extension will provide a view into my home. Next slide, please.
Thank you.
So that you can see, the rear section of my home is a one-story solarium. I basically live in this extension. It has my kitchen, laundry, office, dining area, accessible washroom, and a sofa bed where I can sleep if I can't get upstairs. The proposed rear extension at 35 Borden will overlook the glass of my living area. This will have an unacceptable impact on my privacy. I am asking that the committee require that the plans be modified to prevent this. I will turn 95 on May 27. My mother lived to be 103. I am looking to you to ensure that I have many more safe, happy years in my home. Thank you for taking my concerns into account in your review of this file. I'm happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Well done.
Thank you so much.
Anyone have any questions to the speaker? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, sirs.
All right.
Next speaker here in person. You may come to the podium. No other speakers for this item? Here in person?
Good afternoon, sir. Name and address, please.
Keith Batista, 28 Borden Street.
All right, sir, you have five minutes.
I'd like to speak personally and professionally about this. I was a firefighter at the neighboring fire hall just south of Borden, and I know the impact through, we have 60, we have at 60 Borden, we have a residence there that has multiple units. And the impact from that to having also at the end of the street a food bank has caused an awful lot, and it's documented, EMS, fire, and police on our, on our street. So I know the impact of that, and with the fire load that they're looking at putting in, I would, because I can go from personally to professionally and back again, we, my husband and I renovated our home on Borden, and when we did, we did it all legally. Next to us, there was a single fam, a two-family dwelling, and in that dwelling, they've now put five illegal units, and my only recourse, because of the city being under a housing crisis, has been to take it to fire and make sure that fire is aware of it so that there, I have a 15-year-old son that puts ear pods on, and he's not going to hear something. And with being attached, we have, with a fully renovated home, already had a flat in our basement due to having five illegal units next to us. So I happen to know our neighbor, and I've seen her living conditions, and when you start to look at what they're, what they've suggested they're going to do and what they're really going to do, I would oppose this for changing the community, changing the landscape from the softscape to the hardscape that they're proposing. I know in the city, one of the ways that people get around adding additions is by saying, we're putting a deck or a canopy, and then all of a sudden, that canopy is enclosed, and they've then gotten around the issues illegally of getting more units in the house. And I can tell from my neighbors next to me at 30 Borden, they don't, they do not keep it to anything as a single-family home would with bins and garbage and landscaping. It's not something I would think to, yeah. I'm, thank you for the time. I'm looking for anything else. I have written a letter. I do want to, again, personally and professionally about this. If there's any questions, I thank you for your time.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Panel, any questions? No questions. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Next speaker here in person? Yep, come up to the podium.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Kerry Milner, and I live at 56 Borden Street, and I've lived there with my wife for 45 years, in fact, almost to the day.
Okay.
I want to just talk a little bit about what has been said about whether or not this proposal for 37, for 35, excuse me, is what it claims to be. When you see that you have a total of 10 bathrooms, each self-contained with a self-contained toilet, it suggests more than it's going to be a two-unit family, one for a family unit and a basement apartment. I have lived next door to a rooming house that up until two years ago has basically been unlicensed, illegal, and has caused, I can't tell you how much grief, how much sadness it has caused to me and my family, and later learning that our neighbors, very good people, extremely nice people, extremely dedicated people, people who are not NIMBY people, but whose lives have been affected by not only that particular rooming house that has at least 30 people as residents, but in fairness, has improved because the city finally, finally, after about 40 years, took away the property owner's license to have as a rooming house on the condition that it was taken over, the operations were taken over by a not-for-profit, which it has. Borden Street is an amazing street. It's got a lot of character, and believe me, after 45 years, I've seen a lot of characters. But it's, it's a lovely street, and it has enormous density. This is what I worry about. And I worry about, and I've seen it over 45 years, the numbers of residences that never applied for any type of building permit or claimed to be one thing only to be turned into another, which, again, rooming house-type things, multi-tenant units. I just ask you to consider very seriously of not what only this proposal claims to be, but looking at the drawings, listening to professionals like my neighbor Keith, who knows this thing, and even listening to Inga, myself, and others who, neighbors who will testify and give deputations, that the community has supported multi-tenant housing, and particularly and almost only when it has been zoned as such. We know the city finally has changed its attitude, and will go in, fire inspections will happen, public health will go in, and that's all I'm imploring you to do. Just please consider what the proposal purports and what it actually intends to become. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any questions, panel? No? Thank you very much, sir.
Any other speakers here in person for this item? See none? Okay, we will go to those that are virtual. So Sue Dexter.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, ma'am. Full name and address, please.
You betcha. My name is Sue Dexter, D-E-X-T-E-R, and my address is 97 Wilcox Street in Harvard Village.
All right, ma'am, you have five minutes.
Yeah, I must say, at the risk of duplication, I think probably, I'm on the board of the Harvard Village Residents Association. Our boundary serves Spadina Blower College and Bathurst. We're a late Victorian, 1890, working-class neighborhood of long, narrow houses on 16-foot lots, that's 5.7 meters. The neighborhood is dominated by semi-detached houses, such as the case with 35 Borden, which shares a common wall with 37 Borden. And you would be hard-put to find anyone in the community living in a semi-detached who does not have some noise issues with their neighbors. These are thin walls. You're now by well acquainted with the details of the subject property, basement apartment, three bedrooms, en suite, three full bathrooms, above-ground for extended family use, seven bedrooms, all with en suite bathrooms, and a living, dining, kitchen room on the main floor with its own full bathroom, all in this late, narrow Victorian, semi-detached house with thin walls and a long-term neighbor that you have heard from. 10 bedrooms, each with an en suite complete bathroom and a bonus off the kitchen. Why? What family, even an extended family, affords every adult, every child, their own bathroom, full bathroom? When do children get their own bathrooms? The answer is never. These plans raise a different question. What rooming house affords every tenant their own bathroom? The answer is many. In our view, far from creating a single-family plus basement apartment, this application actually converts the building to instant multi-tenant use, almost double the permitted density, 10 bedrooms versus six permitted. Put differently, this is a plan for strangers living together who would not want to bathe in someone else's tub. Whatever intentions the owner expresses with the best will in the world, there is no guarantee of even his use, let alone what a future owner might do with the house. Things happen. Children grow up, family members move, creating ready-made rental rooms. It would be tempting to help with the mortgage, or the house is sold to another owner with different intentions. Everyone knows this is an unusual application. Certainly, in more than 20 years appearing before a committee on behalf of the neighborhood, neither I nor my colleagues have seen an above-grade plan like it for a single-family use. HVRAs send our concern that the plan should be dealt with as a rooming house to the head of planning for our area. He, too, noted the unusual number of bathrooms and sent it to his local planners. They advised us late last week, they were sending the plans back to zoning, querying the zoning examination because of the number of bathrooms. They also said, without zoning changing its opinion, creating new variances, they would not be commenting, but the committee of adjustment had enough information to make a good decision. In our view, you can make a bad decision right. Committee of Adjustment puts the stamp of approval on building plans, not just variances. If an error is made in identifying variances, you can correct it. Otherwise, in ratifying this application, committee would be setting the stage for a turnkey, a legal multi-tenant use. Under the zoning bylaw for multi-tenant use, there are 10 bedrooms in the building, as stated in the bylaw, when six are permitted. HVRAs also seeks way to permit intensification, always in mind with protections for tenants and neighbors a legal use would confer. Early inspections save lives. Please note, contrary to the building code, the basement in the plans has no second exit, a situation that to the building code, the basement in the plans has no second exit, a situation that resulted in a recent death of a tenant in a fire in Kensington Market. We oppose approving this application. We believe it fails the four tests. We support Urban Forestry's request for a deferral to protect a bylaw-protected tree in the front yard. It's a very handsome horse chestnut, full bloom this season.
Okay, ma'am, I'm gonna ask you to conclude, please.
Okay, so, we hope you do the right thing. My colleague, Roy Gus Sinclair, will speak to his direct experience in a bit.
Thank you. Panel, any questions?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll now hear from Roy Sinclair.
Hello, everyone.
Mr. Sinclair, before you start, are you speaking on behalf of the Rate Payers Association?
I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the Rate Payers Association.
Sabrina, do we, the rate payers have already spoken, so, sir, if you're going to speak to the impact on you, that's fine, but your colleague has already represented the views of your association. So if I could ask you just to limit your remarks to your own, the impact of this application on yourself.
I will, I'll do my best, sir. I am on the board of the Harvard Village Association. I've lived here for 35 years. We've had many unhappy experiences with illegal rooming houses over the years, and getting access was virtually impossible, and without inspections, there is serious overcrowding and safety issues that had no remedy. With the new rooming house rules, regular inspections would now be required. I'm going to tell you a personal story about a nightmare about an illegal rooming house on my street, Major Street, which is about 20 houses north of College. There were, we knew there was multiple tenants in there, but we could never get access, and we could never get, they, we were, really, and there was between eight and 10 separate units in the house, and we learned that from the tenants who asked us to intervene if we could. They showed us photographs showing unsafe wiring and on all the different units. Two neighbors tried to pursue to get inspections done on this house from 2019 to 2023. The landlord refused all attempts by Toronto Fire and municipal licensing and standards to perform such inspections. The counselor attempted mediation, but to no avail, and after that wrote letters to CFA opposing the tax accused by the landlord. Further, landlord's application to legalize the basement apartment at CFA was denied, but he continued to operate as before. A T-LAB hearing ensued, but on the city's website today, the building is still not listed as a licensed multi-tenant house. This particular house is an invitation to this. And, and finally, at the risk of insulting someone, I have been attending CFA meetings since the early 90s, and with the welter of applications, not difficult to believe that from time to time, the zoning examiner could make a wrong call. It is my opinion that planning and/or zoning err'd in not seeing this project as a rooming house application, and with the density and licensing and other standards to apply, such as off-the-top, keeping it to six bedrooms. No matter that the declared use was for extended family, this could be a rooming house in a trice, if not from the get-go, and we'd be stuck yet with another five-year tires and unsuccessful effort to bring the landlord to obey the law and protect affected tenants from danger. And I recommend refusing this application, and I thank you for bearing and letting me say my piece.
All right. Thank you, sir. Any questions? No? Sabrina, this was a zoning review or a waiver? Zoning review?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, a zoning review.
Okay, thank you. All right. Our next speaker?
We'll hear from Pamela Robinson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could just give your name and address, please, for the record.
Right. My name's Pamela Robinson. I live at 48 Borden Street. I live directly across from the building that is in the proposal, and I really don't have a lot to say. Other people before me have spoken very eloquently about our concerns, and the concern, of course, is that this is, will become a rooming house. We have spent a lot of time in our neighborhood, residents, neighbors, supporting the legal rooming house for personal care, which is at the corner of Van Connet and Borden, that's five doors up from me. And as Kerry Milner said, a lot of us got together and, and made, advocated with the licensing tribunals so that conditions could be improved there. It was horrendous. So after the not-for-profit people took over management, things got better, and was because, partly because we advocated for that as neighbors. So our neighborhood has become quieter and more, and safer, I believe, and I think it's better for those people who live in that rooming house. So my concern, of course, is just that this proposal is masking what will become a rooming house, and so that's my big concern. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll hear from David Fox.
Mr. Fox?
Can I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Name and address, please, sir.
I live at 48 Borden Street. Direct, as Pamela Robinson just said, right across the road from this proposed renovation of this house. For 20 years, I was a rooming house owner, and the rooming house was configured exactly the same way, 25 rooms, each with a private bathroom. So I was born at night, but I wasn't born last night, and what's being proposed here is a rooming house. So we've had tremendous problems in our neighborhood with 60 Borden Street, some of which have been alleviated, but our house has been vandalized at least five times over the 10 years we've lived in this house. And so for anyone to call what we're doing here a NIMBYism is to make a scurrilous and totally unfounded judgment, judgment. And so thank you very much. That's all I have to say.
Very, thank you, sir. Anything, anyone else? That's it? Okay, can we get the agent back? Hello, sir?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, have you, you've been listening?
Yes, I have been listening, yes. It's, I mean, I heard the neighbors concerned. I have to acknowledge that this was really well mobilized and well coordinated objection, which may or may not shift the community's opinion. So I, I mean, I can hear a lot of concern here, but the main point is really why point. Basically, the concern was the number of bedrooms, and each bedroom has a washroom there. Our application actually is for a duplex, is not really for a rooming house. If the city requires, we, the owner can provide a later use. I think their declaration form there, because sign on it. And also, if in the future, the neighbor, I think you have really well organized the community here. If the neighbor found it and used otherwise, so the neighbor could easily call 311 or call the city's building department, the fire department, and make complaints, and then basically kind of ask owner to follow what is declared. If you look at the floor plan, if you look, specifically, if you look at the ground floor, they just have wide bedroom there. They have five hundred square feet of living space. I'm not quite sure if any rooming house would kind of figure that way, right? So it's really because the owner want to live here, that's what they told me, that's why they wanted large space on the ground floor. And also because they have a large family there, that's why they want more bedrooms on the second floor, the third floor. And everybody, I mean, you know, for, I guess, if you have that space, you always want to have a washroom for yourself, right? You don't, typically, you don't really, I mean, unless you don't really have space, you share bedrooms, share bathrooms. Otherwise, nowadays, if you look at the new development, everybody want a washroom. I think that's pretty normal nowadays. So the other thing, actually, we previously, previously, it's kind of pretty common situation here. Previously, we asked the city, basically, we, we want to know if the city has either zoning bylaw or other bylaws regulate number of bedrooms, washrooms in a semi-detached, detached or townhouse. You know, basically, we have no instructions there. It's really, there's no specific regulation kind of regulates how many bedroom you put there. But the bottom line here, you have three stories, seven, seven bedrooms. I don't think that's too much. If you kind of running a rooming house with just several rooms, several rooms, do you think that going to cover that cost? I just don't think so, right? Yeah, the, the other thing, I think, I, I don't think we received a comment from the, the clearly planner regarding planning, planning concerns, and we believe, whereas we are requesting a fairly minor, you know, it's really related to the front yard, backyard, soft landscaping. Front, backyard, basically, currently it's kind of concrete pavement. We want to put a concrete kind of permeable pavement there. Front yard is just kind of a reduction of five square meters of soft landscaping there, right? And the building depth, if you look at there, we are not really kind of really long. It's line up with our neighbor in 37 Borden Street, right? As far as last month, it was, it's really a canopy covered the basement walkout. I think somebody kind of was concerned this kind of enclosed. In this case, it is not a platform canopy. There's no way you can enclose that four room. So, yeah, that's my classification. Hopefully, I mean, I can answer some concerns.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. Panel, any questions of the agent? Nazila first?
Through you, Mr. Chair. My question from, from the applicant is regarding variance number one. The minimum 25% of rear yard must be maintained as a soft landscaping, and you propose 0%. Is there any way you improve that? And how much is the existing soft landscaping in the rear yard?
Yeah, for that way, actually, currently, there's no soft landscaping there. See how, see how, actually, see how, if you look at the side, actually, see how it's a drop there, right? So, and there are also a gate in the backyard, so there's a walk, I mean, basically, this more or less like a walkway, right? That's why we, I mean, we don't really mind to put a soft landscaping for the entire area, but I don't think it's going to, the soft landscaping is going to survive in this environment, right? That's why we propose, you know, use permeable pavors there instead of soft landscaping.
Okay, thank you. Peter, you have a question? Okay. Anyone else have any questions?
Just along that same line, you'd be agreeable to us making it a condition that the permeable pavers be included?
Yes, I don't have problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, let's take it into committee. Anyone have any comments or observations, Phil?
I, I think the community members made some very, very good points. I don't look at these plans and, I don't think it's impossible that a family would move in and want a bathroom in every bedroom, and it be a large family, and they have six bedrooms. It's not impossible. But I do think Occam's razor, I think the community has a point that this doesn't look like that. But I think the important thing to note is that that's not what's before the committee. There's no variance that's about, that's about occupancy. We have some very small variances about the front yard landscaping. The front yard is, you know, along Borden and in this area. The, the majority of what appears to be the landscaping is actually in the city boulevard, so that's what has created the condition that we're seeing. So the, the variances don't speak to the issues that the community is concerned with, and I do feel sympathetic because if this does turn into a problematic rooming house, they'll have to find a way to get the city to recognize it and deal with it in the way that it sounds like they've had success in the past, but we have to consider it on the basis that we have it. And on the basis that we have it, I, I see all of these variances as, as minor in the circumstance.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Comments? Kerry?
Well, there's very little soft landscaping being proposed. I couldn't, I don't think I can support variance one or two. And to some extent, you know, we're being advised that the application is sort of a mirage. Not sure what to do with that, but in any event, having found that variances one and two are not viable, I wouldn't, I would vote against approving this.
Okay. Peter?
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I have issues with variance one. I, variance two, I understand the, that's kind of a common occurrence in these front yards, but the fact that the applicant is ripping up concrete and putting in permeable pavers without providing any rear yard soft landscaping, like, that's zero 125 is required. To me, that's objectional, objectionable. I understand the, the concerns of the neighbors, but to Phil's point, it's, that's not before us, and I, I think it seems to be a kind of a gap in city policy, right? When you have something that looks like it's going to be a rooming house, but there's no, there's nothing in the, in the zoning, you know, that talks about bedroom numbers and, and bathroom numbers that address that, it feels like a gap, and I, that, that's something I hope is resolved sooner than later.
Okay. For my part, I, I agree with you, Peter. I, I, you loathe to approve anything that says 0% landscaping. That is totally contrary to where the city is trying to go with respect to permeability, even though they are pavers. And I think even in the front, you could probably squeeze out a little bit more, and, you know, the, the depth is a little on the excessive side. I, you know, you've all spoken to the neighbors, and quite clearly, there's a lot of passion and angst, and likely because this street and this neighborhood's kind of been burned in the past. And, you know, that is the real sad part about this is that, you know, certain behaviors from certain individuals tend to prejudice what could happen in neighborhoods, and I don't think we can apply what happened in the past to what this individual would And I don't think we can apply what happened in the past to what this individual would be doing. Um, but I think you're right. It would, you know, when you see instances where it quite clearly looks like it might be a rooming house, then maybe, um, maybe staff should have a, a very close look at it, uh, and, and consider whether in fact that is, is the, the long-term objective of the application or not. But on the face of it, just looking at the variances themselves, the variances are excessive. They are not minor. So I won't be supporting this either. So Gary, do you want to make a motion?
Actually, I just wanted to add, you know, when the four tests were to apply, one of those tests is, is a desirable development for the area, and I think, I think it fails on, on that particular test as well. Uh, in any event, I will, yes, I'll be prepared to make a motion that we refuse the four variances that are requested for this property on Borden Avenue.
Okay, motion by Mr. McKay to refuse a seconder. Mr. Reed, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The application is refused. Thank you.
Three, Mr. Chair. I'd like to just make a quick announcement, uh, because I've noticed that there are some individuals that have shown up for the two o'clock session. And so we're still hearing our morning session applications, and then the members do have to take an hour break, so we will be back at four o'clock to start that two P M. session. So if you want to leave and then come back for four o'clock, only because the next, uh, the last item, we have about ten speakers registered, so it's going to take another hour or so. Okay? Sorry. So, yes, I'm gauging four o'clock. Thank you.
And if we're going to be here for another hour, can we just take five minutes? I know we're delaying it a little bit.
Through you, Mr. Chair. What I would suggest is maybe let's get through items fourteen and fifteen. There's no registered speakers. And then we'll deal, we'll take a quick break, and then deal with item sixteen. And then I just ask those individuals that are here in person, we're still in hearings, so please have conversations outside. Thank you.
All right. Item number fourteen. Hang on a second. Item number fourteen, twenty-nine Fairmount Crescent. This is an application to alter the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling with, by constructing a partial rear one-story addition. Committee has before to copy plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, an arborist report, and staff report from urban forestry.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We have the, the owner actually is speaking on this one. They are online, no registered speakers.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Name an address, please, sir.
It's Robert Orpen, twenty-nine Fairmount Crescent, and I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, sir, it's only F S I. I don't think we need a presentation in your application today. It's fairly straightforward. We've read your application, we're familiar with the material. Is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we take it into committee for a decision?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Great. We're in committee. Anyone want to take this one on? Peter?
Thanks, Chair. This is a really benign addition to the House, and we're only talking F S I, and the massing doesn't extend the length, and it's, is located, um, kind of in the middle of the neighbor's property, so the impact of this is, is really nil. So I move approval of the application, uh, with the urban forestry condition.
Okay, motion by Mr. Reed to approve, subject to forestry number two. Now a seconder, Ms. West, all in favor? That's, you have your approval, sir. We move on to item number fifteen. Two eighty-one Glen Manor Drive East. This is an application to alter the existing two-story detached dwelling by constructing a front one-story addition, including a south side addition to the existing detached garage and new connection to the dwelling at the northwest portion of the basement level. A front ground floor deck with new front stairs and a second story addition. And the committee has before to copy the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevation, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations received May the twelfth, three-D rendering, uh, seven photographs of the subject property, an arborist report, email correspondence from the agent, a copy of email correspondence between the agents and TRCA, and presentation materials from the agent received May twelfth, and the TRCA permit number. We have staff reports from TRCA, um, Ravine Natural Feature Protection and Urban Forestry, and three letter, form letters in support from two seventy-seven, two seventy-nine, and two eighty-three Glen Manor Drive East.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online, no registered speakers for this item.
Okay.
Hi.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. I'm Kieran Randall, ten ninety-one Leader Road, Mississauga. The architect on record and representing the owners.
Okay, sir. You provided really good materials. The application's fairly, were fairly clear about what you're seeking. I don't think we need a presentation today. We may have questions, but is there anything you'd like to share with the panel before we do that?
Not particularly. Please do come forward with any questions you may have, and I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. Panel, any questions of the speaker, of the agent? Uh, Gary?
Yes, perhaps just one. Just, would you explain for us the front yard setback? What's, what's there presently, and, and why is that being reduced to three meters?
Absolutely. So, the essence of this project is we are connecting the existing garage with existing home. It's, the current front yard is a, is a very steep front yard. So currently, when you park your car, you have to go outside, walk up the stairs into the house. And the essence of this project is really to link those two. So what happens when you link a garage, which is an ancillary building, to a house, that garage becomes part of the main building, which substantially affects where you measure the setback from. So, long story short, the setback today is measured to the front wall of the home, and by integrating, joining the garage with the main home, that setback is measured to the garage. We are adding two feet to the garage, but the, the bulk of the actual shift from the twelve meter to the three meter setback is because we are integrating the garage with the building itself.
Okay. Gary, is that good? All right, anything else? Great. Okay, let's take it into committee. Uh, any comments, Phil?
I, I'll, I'll just go ahead and move to approve this. There's, um, it's a, an interesting concept of integrating the garage into the building. The plans look, uh, look, uh, look interesting and, and good, and the variances themselves are quite minor, especially with that explanation of why it's coming so much closer to the street. For those reasons, I would move to approve it.
There's forestry number two.
Subject to urban forestry, too.
All right, motion by Mr. Gosch to approve, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor. You have your approval. Thank you. Uh, we will take a very short five-minute break. We're running quite late, but I think the next one's going to take some time. Oh, I thought we were breaking. Okay. Break. Okay.
It's good you brought some trees. Congratulations. Yeah. So, so public, hey?
Yeah. They, they, they sent me and said, they said, they said, but till the end, they will not find.
Go on.
Okay. Well, 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 maybe, 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 they can say, you can say.
Oh.
All right, we resume, folks. You want to take your seats? Item number sixteen, one oh-three Hogarth Avenue. This is an application to construct a new three-story detached dwelling with a front, covered front porch and stairs, a rear ground floor terrace, a third floor covered balcony, and a basement walkout with a lower patio. Also, to construct a one-story ancillary building, a detached garage contained two parking spaces in the rear yard butting the laneway. Committee has before to copy the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, revised site plan, floor plans and elevations received May fifteenth. Redline public notice from the agent received May fifteenth. Two photographs of the subject property, a covering letter from the agent, arborist report, revised arborist report, and tree protection plan received May twentieth. Staff reports from, uh, community planning and urban forestry, and an advisory report from urban forestry. We have correspondence and concern from, um, I'm just going to, there's a, there's a number here, uh, in opposition and concern from Hogarth, Grandview Avenue, um, pretty much that's it. Hogarth and Grandview Avenue. I'm not going to read every individual address, but you should all know that we've got it, and we've read all your information. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. We do have the agent online. We also have about nine registered speakers, is what I see. All in opposition. So we'll unmute the agent.
Mr. Galbraith.
Good afternoon, Mr. Clay.
Uh, Sean, can you speak up just a little bit, please?
Uh, is this better?
That is better, thank you.
Great.
For the record, sir?
Sean Galbraith, planner here on behalf of the application, eighteen King Street East, Suite fourteen-hundred, Toronto.
All right. We have, as you've heard, a number of people who want to speak to this application, so we'll need a presentation.
I'd be happy to do so. If my cover letter could be brought up onto the screen. First, um, a couple housekeeping items. Through my review of the application, um, I thought that, uh, the wall height variance, variance number one, uh, was included in error by the zoning examiner, and, uh, we have since confirmed that that is the case. We received an updated zoning notice, uh, just today, and I've provided it to the committee, uh, just confirming, um, that that's the case. Uh, we also have eight small change, two, two small changes to two of the other variances, please. Um, the, uh, the first one is, um, variance four, um, you can see there on the red line, yes. Um, it, in the zoning notice, it correctly referred to this, uh, variance applying to the front porch stairs, but for some reason, the word stairs was omitted from the public notice, and I just wanted to include that just to clarify that the provision of the zoning bylaw applies to the stairs and not the porch itself. There's another variance that pertains to the porch. And then lastly, um, variance number eight, um, we've found more place to put additional soft landscaping in the backyard, and so we've been able to reduce that variance, um, to what is shown there, to the forty-six point five-six percent where, uh, where fifty percent is required, and that's sixty-two point zero-two meters squared. So making those, that situation better.
Great. So can we just confirm, so you're, you're actually removing variance number one?
Delete it entirely.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. In my, in my cover letter, um, we hadn't been able to yet confirm that, uh, you know, my, my review is correct, and so I included it, but we thought it was included incorrectly, so we can just ignore that part of my cover letter.
Okay.
Uh, if we start on page two, um, uh, there's a side-by-side little renderings there. So what is being proposed is a three-story house, um, in a neighborhood that has a number of three-story houses and two-and-a-half story houses. It is entirely in keeping with the scale of houses and, and character of the neighborhood. While this project does trigger now ten variances, a number of them, um, if we can scroll down a couple pages, a number of them are what I call sort of cascading variances. This is perfect. Um, if you could zoom in on that photo, please. Uh, because we are seeking to largely maintain the existing side yard setbacks on the property, which the side yard setbacks are pretty much the norm across the neighborhood, um, they're the, the same on the, or very similar on the adjacent properties as well. This is a neighborhood of small side yard setbacks. And so we're looking to effectively maintain the existing condition. And as such, the zoning bylaw sort of aligns And as such, the zoning bylaw sort of aligns deck side yard setbacks and canopy side yard setbacks and stair side yard setbacks to the side yard setback of the house. And so because we have this one variance, it's sort of cascading throughout a number of provisions in the zoning bylaw because they're all sort of linked in the zoning bylaw. So in this case, you can see, for example, variance two is the side yard setback. Again, those are largely existing conditions within a couple centimeters of variation. And then we're aligning the, the rear deck and the stairs with that side yard setback, and so those trigger variances there. Variances five and six are the front porch setbacks. And then variance four is the one that I mentioned is modified. It pertains to the front stairs. The front stairs are basically in the same position where they currently are. The existing house, as the houses on either side, has a front porch. The existing house has an enclosed front porch, and that is being removed, affording opportunity for additional soft landscaping in the front yard. Now, we, the proposed house will just have simply, you know, a small, a small porch landing in front of the, the front door. The front wall of the house is aligned with the existing houses on either side, so there's no front yard setback, and it maintains the, the sort of character of setbacks along the street. And there's a large front yard boulevard between the sidewalk and the front yard setback. If we could scroll down. Oh, there we go. Soft landscaping. So this is the rear yard soft landscaping. The, the green was the originally proposed soft landscaping, and the dark green is where we're adding additional soft landscaping at the basement walkout level. There's sort of some, some minor terracing of the backyard, and we're making sure that there's soft landscaping on all of them. This provides room for a new tree in the backyard. Urban forestry referenced that we're to provide a new tree. We absolutely are providing a new tree. This has already been agreed to with urban forestry. It's just not shown on the plan. But yes, they want to ensure that there is space for at least one new tree in the backyard, and they've been able to do so. If we can go to the building depth variance. I think it's the last one. There we go. The next one. This is the garage. Basically, we're, they're proposing a two-car garage with zero side, zero meter side yard setbacks. This is sort of the character of garages in the neighborhood, and it's not unusual, but it does trigger a, an area and setback variance for the garage. And then lastly, the depth variance. The house above grade is permitted as of right. It has 17 meters of building depth. The variance for depth only pertains to a basement walkout below the rear porch. So there's no impact in terms of adjacent properties to that building depth variance. And we know that city planning has requested a condition that it be applied, that the variance be limited to the basement level, and we're totally fine with that. That's the intent of the design, and we have no concerns with that being added as a condition. Though we would note that they got the date of the plans incorrect. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the committee has or hold off until we hear from the neighbors.
Great. Thank you very much, panel. While we, if you have questions, we'll wait until we hear from the residents.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yep, there's a number of people here to speak, so please, one by one. Yep. You can both sit.
Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Is your red light on there?
Uh, now it is.
There it is. There you go. If you could introduce yourself, and is this your wife?
My partner, yes.
Partner, pardon me.
I'm Gene Allen from 105 Hogarth Avenue.
And I'm Erica Ritter from the same address.
Great.
And we'd like to share our five minutes.
That sounds perfect. Go ahead, please. Well, wait, have we got your thing up? That's it?
And there are some before and after photos showing the... Maybe go a little bit farther. No. Because I took some photos from our back porch to try and show the shadowing effect. This is the letter dated before March 13th. May 13th, I'm sorry. Oh, there we go.
That it?
And if you could, yes, and then scroll up a little bit. I think there are, there are some, oh, no, I guess after that. That must be. And are there more after that?
Yeah, there's, I'm next to a neighbor.
Oh, it's, it's not quite showing up the way it was, the way it was expected. Anyway, let me...
Why don't we, why don't we go ahead, and you can talk us through it?
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. I'm going to begin with a request for deferral. And the reason we're asking for deferral is we think there has been no meaningful consultation with the neighbors about this project. It has been in the works for about a year. As neighbors of 20 years, we thought we might have some consideration, but in fact, we only heard when the Committee of Adjustment informed us of this meeting. Since then, there has been one meeting with the two most immediate neighbors, but that is all. Realizing there were a lot of concerns, we asked for a subsequent meeting with affected neighbors. Generally, the applicants refused. We ask for deferral so that some real consultation can take place. After the initial meeting with the immediate neighbors, I asked Mr. Galbraith to provide a list of allowed variances he intended to cite before the COA. He didn't provide this information. On Friday, I saw, only on Friday, I saw his latest submission to the Committee of Adjustment on the website, citing six specific properties, read the floor space index. He didn't send this to us directly, even though he had asked. This left almost no time to assess the validity of these examples before today. I was able to conduct a very preliminary examination. I had surgery last week, so I'm a bit limited. And it appears that at least five of the six are not relevant because the local context is very different from our situation. We require more time to assess these six variances more fully. The Catalpa tree that the applicants wish to remove is a major issue. I believe this is a boundary tree, which cannot be removed without our consent. If it remains, the proposed underground basement extension can't proceed. The hearings should be deferred until Toronto Forestry provides its report on the request for removal and the question of whether it's a boundary tree or not. The hearing should also be ideally rescheduled for an evening session so that several affected neighbors who work during the day could participate. Two new issues only came to my attention in the last couple of days that I think require further information. As far as I can tell, there's a 10-meter height limit in our area, according to the city height overlay map, online anyway, and this proposal is for a 10.99 meter height. Also, I believe there's a question of potential encroachment on a long-established right-of-way in the walkway that we use to get to the front and rear. For all these reasons, we believe the hearing should be deferred, but in the time remaining, please let me move on to our major objections. Opposition to this proposal among the nearest neighbors is unanimous. Three houses to the east, three houses to the west, three from the north side of Grandview, one from the north side of Hogarth. And all 13 neighbors object strongly to this proposal. All believe that this proposal is grossly disproportionate for this stretch of Hogarth Avenue, contrary to what Mr. Galbraith has told you. This is an area of 1,300 and 1,400 square foot houses. The proposed house is more than twice as large, 3,400 square feet. Its looming walls and extended depth will greatly reduce the amount of light in the backyards of all the immediate neighbors on the south side of Hogarth. That's what I wanted to show through these, through these photos. I don't know if, they're not showing up any better, but I, I took one from our back porch, and it showed the extent of, of what we would lose. I took one from the back porch of our neighbor at 107 to try and capture the height, because my camera is not big enough to capture the enormous height of this property. So the, the height, the, the height and depth together have a huge effect. This would be by far the biggest block, biggest house on the block of Hogarth between Hampton and Logan, and it will be cited at future Committee of Adjustment hearings as a precedent for more enormous houses. The third floor rear balcony and side windows violate the backyard privacy of houses to the east, west, and south. We object to the depth extension in the basement. There's no local precedent. Nothing could prevent a future owner of this property from building above grade to this depth. There are serious questions about water management as a result. If this is approved, other builders and developers are sure to ask for the same underground extension leading to a street with enormous houses and postage-size stamps backyards. I'm just going to quickly say, the most relevant comparator is 98 Hogarth, directly across the street, where a similar hulking looming property was reduced on the, the depth of the second and third floors, and the neighbors agreed. We'd like to have a similar negotiation. We think agreement can be reached. The final point, and I'm sorry, I'm getting into your time. The applicants are turning a two-unit rental property into a massive single-family home, reducing the stock of affordable housing. Requests to allow zoning variances for retrograde projects of this kind should not be granted. And I'm just...
I'd like to add to that. These are absentee landlords. They have owned this house for longer than we've lived there, for 21 years. They have let it run down with no apparent concern either for their tenants or the immediate neighbors. They've never made any effort to accommodate us, to know us. We had to go to the city to get a carbuncle of a shed removed from the side of their house because they wouldn't do it. They don't clean their eaves troughs. They're ugly about it when you ask them about it. Now they want to tear down this house. They've neglected and accommodated a suburban-sized house in a subterranean bunker covering more than half of their small-city backyard, and they do not care what...
I'm sorry, ma'am. Wrap up, please.
Yes, I am wrapping up. These changes amount to an assault on the neighborhood, on the residents, and they finally are going to move on to this street that they have ignored for 35 years. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Okay, next speaker that's here in person, please come up to the podium.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name's Elizabeth Mitchell. I live at 88 Hogarth Avenue. My husband, Robert Mansell, is there, too. We've been there since 1993. I want to tell, I'm going to be making just a few comments about the, the variances because I have written submissions about it. And my main point right now is to join my neighbors in saying this is a, an application that should be at least adjourned, if not dismissed outright. So with respect to the substance of the, of the variances that are sought, this is not the, this is not at all a proposal that fits within the, the confines of our neighborhood. It's not a fit in Riverdale where we, we do have large homes, we have small homes, we have joint homes, detached homes, rooming houses. We have all kinds of housing, but this one is aiming to put the very, very large house on a very, very small lot. Our, the houses in our neighborhood are historical, so things like the, this entire cascading of variances because the, the applicants want to rely on the current narrow alleyway that exists between a 100-year-old house and its neighbors, they're only .82 across in, in my measurements. There should be .9. These applicants chose to demolish a, an historical house which had historical grandfathered provisions from the current bylaws, and yet they want to take advantage of the, the improvements. You can get an extra couple of meters of length. You can get other things like that. But they want to do away with the disadvantages of living in a crowded downtown neighborhood, and there aren't too many people from the suburbs who would not describe Riverdale as crowded. We happen to like it that way. We're downtown people. But it, it should not be, they should not be allowed to demolish an historic house and then rely on the .5 side setback variances that they have wanted to do. I would like, we have provided photographs, our photographs of the old house. In particular, I'd like the board to note, the old house has a backyard, a rear wall consistent with the, with its neighbors, 15 meters. And the, going to 17, and from there to 19.43, creates the exact blockage that my neighbor has, has shown you in the photographs. It's a very high, very long extension of the back. It may be legal, but to go even beyond what is legal for an extra 2.43 meters that they say will only ever be a subterranean rear wall is really quite inappropriate. We have specifically asked for this writer, sorry, the applicant to give us any precedents in our neighborhood that allow a walkout, an extension of the basement, which then has sliding glass doors onto a patio and gracious steps going up to the ground level. That kind of subterranean planning is something that's absolutely brand-new in our neighborhood and quite inappropriate. And there, in the course of all this, the materials we've seen, there have never been any discussions about retaining walls, fences, or anything like that. What I'd like to turn to next is the adjournment request, and we've got three reasons for saying that this is a case that should be adjourned. First, there's no meaningful consult, there's no consultation with the, with the affected neighbors, aside from the abutting members, the abutting neighbors. It's not up to the applicant to pick and choose who the affected neighbors are. The bylaw tells us, those of us who live in a jurisdiction around, determined by law, who's affected, and we are affected, and we, we have questions, and we would like them answered. And yet, when I wrote to the applicant's agent by email on May 4th, saying we have questions, we'd like a discussion, we'd like some precedents, he wrote back, we're not having any further meetings with the neighbors, number one. And I specifically asked for precedent addresses, and I was told, I'm not going to give you any precedent addresses. You should just trust me. I have read 100 files. Well, I didn't ask him how many files he had read. I asked him for precedent addresses. And those did not come at that time, and they did not come until May 15. His letter says May 13, but it says received by the Committee of Adjustments, May 15, which is after the deadline, and the...
Ma'am, I'm just going to ask you if I could just please wrap up.
Okay. So I think there are, the changes that my friend has outlined indicate, this is, this is not even a case that's ready to be here. He wants to change, to change some, some things. We're supposed to rely on him, I suppose, for the, for those changes, that the amount of increased soft landscaping, for instance, would make any difference. And the failure to disclose relevant documents in a timely way means that those of us who live in the neighborhood have not had a chance to consider the, those submissions.
Okay, ma'am. I'm just going to put one question to you. You've talked about the neighborhood and a number of different procedural things. What's the impact of this, this proposal on, on you personally?
On me personally?
Yeah.
The, I live across the street. As a matter of fact, I was involved with 98 Hogarth and part of the consultations that we had with that. The law determines that we're affected neighbors, and the reason we're affected is that this committee gives approvals that are not limited to that house.
No, no, I understand that, ma'am. You're worried about precedent, but I, what I'm worried, what I'm trying to get at from you and others is, what is the direct impact of this proposal on you?
I would suggest that it impacts my neighborhood because there's going to be a giant house flanked by what we have been living with for, since 1993, hundreds of years. There have been small houses, a lot of small houses, that are being dwarfed by, by a looming presence.
So your concern is the, the fit within the community?
Very much the fit within the community.
That's fine. I'm going to draw this to a conclusion. Thank you very much. Any questions, panel? No? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Next person here in person that wishes to speak?
I should say, both the deputies so far have asked for a deferral. We will ask the agent to respond to that request as well.
So I should go ahead here?
Go ahead, ma'am. Yeah.
Yeah, this is my file from 2007.
Sorry, before you start, your name and address, please.
Sorry, sorry. It's Eileen Schwartz. I live at 20 Grandview. I'm on the south side of the affected house.
Okay.
This is my file from 2017, when I came to Committee of Adjustment and protested something that was happening next to me. And I had the similar situation back in the winter of 2018. My new neighbor bought a two-and-a-half-story home on a 25-foot lot by 120 feet deep. After the Committee of Adjustment hearing and the decision, the house was demolished, including the basement. A three-story house was built in its place, which was closer above the coverage of 1.6 of the lot. The issues at the Committee of Adjustment were 11 variances, and I guess today we've dropped it down to 10 for 103 Hogarth. The more serious ones dealt with building the house on the west property line, leaving a half-meter, 18-inch passageway between my number 20 and their number 22. a half-meter, 18-inch passageway between my number 20 and their number 22. The passage would be too narrow for utility servicing or emergency services. Luckily, there is no fence between us. The new neighbors did eventually center the property and therefore became compliant. So now we have a walkable space. The front-facing windows onto the street overlooked opposite and side yards and windows. The city asked for setback of about 10 feet on the third story, which was complied with, and that became acceptable. A backdoor wooden deck of about 2 meters by 3 meters was included in habitable part of the house. The gross floor area was allowed and included the basement plus three stories. This is not as extreme as us being asked at 103 Hogarth, but is still a large house. Regarding 103 Hogarth, the new build is requesting about a 20-foot extension which leaves 105 Hogarth, which is Jean and Erica, in a shadowed afternoon-evening situation, and a shadowed morning situation at 101 Hogarth on the other side. That, that is about 10 feet long. The neighbors have written in on this, so they've got, sent a letter regarding that. The house at 103 Hogarth requests multiple east and west windows violating the fire code. So it's got multiple windows going up both sides. My concern with the 103 Hogarth ancillary building, commonly called garage, is that there is no access on either the east or the west side. It's right on the property lines. The doors open immediately onto the laneway. The lane turns northwest by about 20 degrees, and then behind that, there are 13 houses on the cul-de-sac, leaving a dangerous situation for pedestrians, people, kids, trucks, service trucks, vehicles. You can't see past the garage that they intend to build. And there's no room for snow removal, so some, one of the other neighbors wrote a letter about that. Lastly, there is discussion of an underground basement room with a patio above it, leaving the possibility that this might become a future overbuild going up one and two stories. So they've got the footprint, so maybe they're going to build on top of that. And a little bit more, I'm almost done. I do believe that the house at 22 Grandview, as requested in my case, and then finally built, is very similar to the variance request at 103 Hogarth, which is now more overbuilt if this goes ahead. We are also losing the friendliness of Riverdale, as many properties are built high and the fences cut each other off. So more and more, it's becoming so overbuilt that we don't get to know our neighbors, which is not good for public safety and so on. So that's my position on it.
Great, thank you, ma'am. Panel, any questions? The speaker? Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome. I appreciate this.
Next speaker.
Hi.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Chair and the, the committee. My name is Heather Walsh, and I am one of the owners of 109 Hogarth Avenue. And my partner and I have lived there since 2005. So we live, we live in a semi-detached, roughly 1,400-square-foot home in which we raised two children. And I'd like to point out to the committee that that 1,400-square-foot home, in the original footprint, it had five bedrooms. So you don't need an enormous house to raise a family. Now, we live in very close proximity to our neighbors on Hogarth Avenue. My lot is four-and-a-half meters wide, and to put that in context, that is the length of a Honda CR-V. These are very narrow lots, and we need to, because we live in very close proximity, we have to be respectful of our neighbors and be respectful of their privacy, especially in their backyard. So we've had various people make comments about the, the depth of the house, the height of the proposed house, the size of the garage. All of these things are going to have an impact on the privacy of the people who live on either side of this house. And I live, I live three doors over from the, the proposed, from 103. So this is going to have a major impact on people's privacy with balconies overlooking people's backyards, the terrace at ground level, which I believe is going to be about 1.5 meters above ground level, which means that anyone sitting on that terrace will essentially be looking into the middle of Jean and Erica's backyard, and the backyard on, on the other side. The main, the main objection that I raised in my letter had to do with drainage. Many of, many of us here probably remember the Downspout Disconnect Program, and the point of that program was to alleviate the strain on the storm sewers in the, in the city. Now, this is going to be a, a house that takes up roughly, the footprint of the house will take up roughly half of the lot. The backyard is going to be terraced towards the house in order to accommodate the, the walkout, the walkout basement. And I just don't see how, how this plan is going to be able to handle rainwater, which I've mentioned in my, in my letter. Water is going to run towards the house, towards the walkout at the back of the house. Rainwater that falls on the roof of the house itself, I don't see how it can possibly be channeled into the backyard, because it's just going to run downhill back into the house. And I don't think the very small front yard is going to be able to absorb the rainwater that, that is channeled off the roof of the house. So again, where is this water going to go? It's going to go into the basement of the house? It's likely going to go into the basements of the neighbors' houses, because as we've, as we've heard, there's only, what, 45 centimeters between this house and the house on either side? So I think there are many reasons to, to object, to object to this build, and, you know, one of the, one of the city's focuses is improving the climate resilience of the city, and this does nothing to, this does nothing to, to move towards that goal, because I think there's no allowance, allowance made for drainage. And as I think has already been mentioned, this is turning a two, two-unit rental property into a very, very large, single-family house, which is, again, contrary to the city's priorities of providing more housing generally and more rental housing. And that's all I have to, to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions, panel? No? Thank you very much, ma'am.
Next speaker here in person.
Hello, sir.
Hi, thank you. My name's James Thornton. I live at 107 Hogarth with my partner. I've been there since 1991, and I'm going to talk about comparable, comparables. This house has no access to its own backyard. .45 a meter is 17.7 inches. I'm wider than that, so are you. What's going on there? I have driven the entire North Riverdale, which is from Danforth to Gerard, Cape, and over to the Don Valley on my bicycle. And in that entire district, there's not a single house that has been built this century that does not have access to its own backyard. Plain and simple, not one, including the comparables they sent in that are new. So that's that one. There's something... And the garage is about 300 meters from the firehouse. Firehouse trucks can't get down our lane. There's a 90-degree turn to get behind the houses there. Most trucks can't get down there, so it's simply nothing to protect the back there. So that's that one. The second one is this, what I call a peep-and-tom balcony. It is so far back, I think you could lean over that balcony, and look at Patrick's front door. It's ridiculously far back. There are no comparables in the immediate area, because I can't ride my bike through places where there aren't lanes. But from Danforth to Grandview, which is five streets north, where the fourth street's south, and the immediate block, Logan and Hampton, there are none that stick that far back into the balcony. There are two balconies that extend beyond the neighbors' houses. One is less than a meter, and the other one is on a semi-detached house where there's a, a wall, an extension built on the other half, and then an L shape, so it's like three meters from the property line to the, so they're not looking in on anybody there. So those are my two points. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
I'd also, since I have a little time, I'd like to point out that my house is built on clay. There is no foundation, because it's not required. You need a jackhammer to break it. There's no water drainage through that basement anywhere but that clay. It's just running away. And they seem to be using these two-sunken sections as drainage water, and I can't see it, it's just flowing down. You know, you're going to stir the soil, and it's going to go straight to the, to the leaping tile of the house is where it's going. It's 43%, 46%. Well, that's the whole of it, quite frankly. Thanks very much for your time.
All right, sir. Thank you very much. Panel, any questions? None? Thank you very much, sir.
Any other speakers here in person? See none? Okay, through you, Mr. Chair. We have three additional speakers online, so we'll hear from the owner at 97 Hogarth Avenue, Edward Glassman.
Yeah, hello, Edward Glassman, 97 Hogarth Avenue. I'll be brief. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'll be brief. I didn't put it in my letter, because I didn't think of it, but the failure to leave any space for snow removal in the back, I think, is a serious concern. We have that at, at our house, where an addition was built behind us and left no room for snow removal. Big concern. I'm also concerned about the overall height of the house. I don't understand the need to build it quite as high as they're building it. It will impact our sun exposure at 97 Hogarth. And I guess, lastly, I'm concerned about the removal of the catolpa tree, which is a beautiful tree, adds to our view from the back of our, from our deck. And I think, oh, yeah, one last point is, I'm really sorry to hear that there was really no attempt at kind of compromise in discussion with Jean and Erica and Patrick and Karen. That, I think, speaks negatively to, to the undertaking. And I'm going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Any questions, panel? None? Next speaker.
We hear from the owner at 128 Hogarth Avenue.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I don't know how to turn on my camera, so I, I don't think it's on.
All right, we can hear you. If you can give us your name and address, please.
Okay. My name is Cynthia Wilkie. I live at 128 Hogarth. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my partner, Ronald Winthrop. I'm wondering if I could ask you to turn up a page in the development, in the plans, the revised plans. I wanted to address the, I think, page A6, which has the kind of schematic drawings.
Hang on a sec. Just pull that up.
I'm not sure they were in order. That's, I'm looking for the one that's the colored kind of schematic. There's four, four drawings. Ah, you just went past it, yes. So I'm particularly asking you to draw your attention to the one in the lower right-hand corner, and I'll, I'll come to that. All right, so as I think people have said, the number already, the number and nature of variances illustrate that in every dimension, this project aspires to significantly exceed the normal zoning envelope for this neighborhood. And as has been noted, we're not talking about variances required to introduce gentle density in the form of a duplex or triplex. In fact, it's quite the opposite. These variances are proposed to reduce the two-unit rental property with a single-family dwelling that is 60% larger than the, than what is permitted under the bylaw, and with a footprint that eats up most of the lot's size, and which, as a precedent, could seriously undermine the character of this neighborhood and city objectives.
They're calling you.
What?
They're calling you.
They are?
128 Hogarth.
I'm speaking, Ron. Sorry.
What?
Okay, you can go, keep going.
Sorry, I was just being interrupted. So, so instead, this has a, this has a footprint which, as a precedent, could seriously undermine the character of this neighborhood and city objectives with respect to green infrastructure. Well, the law, by law, permits a depth of 16 meters. Structures in this neighborhood do not typically extend to that depth, and certainly not over three full stories. The impacts on adjacent properties in terms of light and privacy are obvious. To not only extend over the full 16, 17 meters, but also seek to reduce side setbacks and significant wall height, and increase wall heights, has a cumulative negative effect that should not be permitted, and it's one that none of us would want to see in an adjacent building to us. Of even more concern is the proposal to extend beyond the 17 meters to create that 19.4-meter subgrade footprint. A footprint which then requires a hardscaped patio plus hardscape stairs to reach grade where another patio was proposed, now shown as green. The result leads to an undesirable and unacceptable reduction of rear yard soft landscaping space. In fact, the space is so diminished that, in spite of what the agent has said, it seems unlikely that the property will accommodate a replacement for the mature tree that has to be removed. And I don't believe there is any confirmation of that from City Forestry. If the variances requested for this additional extension are granted, they will become a precedent for expanding already generous homes to the detriment of the increasingly important green infrastructure that is the hallmark of this neighborhood, an infrastructure that is important from a climate change perspective, for Toronto's wet weather flow strategy, for support of biodiversity, and for the health and pleasure of residents. So looking at that, that rendering in the lower right-hand corner, I ask you for a moment to imagine the two abutting properties developed in exactly the same way. And then imagine that extending on both sides of the street and across the street and through the whole neighborhood. If you were to grant the requested variances to build this structure at 103 Hogarth, surely you would have to be prepared to grant the same variances for 105, 101, 100, you know, and everybody else. I hope you can see the undesirable effect of that scenario. Where is there room for trees and gardens that are a particular feature of this neighborhood? Where is the habitat for birds, creatures, wildlife? Where is the soft landscaping that soaks up stormwater? Where is the room for trees that cool and cleanse the environment and the ground contribution that, the ground vegetation that contributes to Toronto's great green lung? More mundanely, where is the room, as has been pointed out, to move between the buildings, carry out maintenance between abutting buildings if they are all built 2.47 meters of the property line? Where is the room for necessary infrastructure such as exhaust vents or heat pumps? This project proposes an aggressive footprint that, with the addition of the garage, leaves no room for what makes this a healthy, green, and sustainable neighborhood. Again, I stress that the aspiration to construct a volume of this size is not to add gentle density, it's the opposite.
Ma'am, I'm just going to ask you to wrap up, please.
I'm finishing. It's solely to allow for an overly large, single-family dwelling. For these reasons, we ask that the application be refused and the applicant directed to meet with the interested neighbors before bringing back a revised application. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Panel, any questions? See none?
Through you, Mr. Chair. We'll hear from our last speaker from 8 Grandview Avenue, Neil Stewart.
Hello.
Hi, sir. If you could just, for the record, your name and address?
Sure. So I'm Neil Stewart, and my wife, Heroka, and I have lived at 8 Grandview since 1988. As we said in our written submission, we're strongly opposed to the proposal. It's a monstrosity that will shatter our privacy and is, and that of other nearby properties, and is out of sync with the character of the neighborhood. There are a couple of things I'd just like to go into in a little bit more detail with this opportunity. One is, I want to speak to the garage and the back laneway. Mr. Galbraith, in his presentation earlier, suggested that, that the proposed garage is, is like all the other properties in the neighborhood which are built out to the, to the laneway. That's not, in fact, the case, and, and the piece that you have on the screen right now shows quite clearly how this area of the laneway, where there is a, a significant kink in the laneway or turn in It's a monstrosity that will shatter our privacy and is, and that of other nearby properties, and is out of sync with the character of the neighborhood. There are a couple of things I'd just like to go into in a little bit more detail with this opportunity. One is I want to speak to the garage and the back laneway. Mr. Galbraith, in his presentation earlier, suggested that, that the proposed garage is, is like all the other properties in the neighborhood which are built out to the, to the laneway. That's not, in fact, the case, and the piece that you have on the screen right now shows quite clearly how this area of the laneway, where there is a, a significant kink in the laneway or turn in the laneway, the property owners have not built garages. We all have open car, parking pads. And, and this enables us to actually make that turn in, in the back lane work because we, as we get in and out of our parking pads, we all kind of work with each other and give a bit of space to each other so that we can make that work. Building the garage as proposed right out to the laneway is going to make things very difficult and propose, and pose something of a safety risk, as a couple of other presenters have noticed, noted. I, I guess another point I would sort of highlight, to your question, Mr. Chair, about the impacts of the proposed development, are from our point of view, on the south side of the, of the laneway, on, on the Grandview Avenue side, the third floor balcony that is, is in the proposal would look right down on our properties and would represent quite a threat to our privacy. I'd also like to sort of raise the real concern we have just with the, the proponents and the, our level of trust in their proceeding with this kind of development in a responsible manner, if, if it were approved. The family behind the proposal have owned the, their property for several decades as a, as a rental property. And we've had, as a, you know, as a group of, of property owners, of residents, a number of issues with them in which they have not responded in a responsible and helpful manner. And, and so I think we have real concerns if this proposal were to go ahead as proposed, just as to how that development would, would itself, in fact, be executed. And just to take the example of their proposal to excavate a whole area below grade to create a gym and utility area for the house, we see this as proposing major risks to drainage and, and could potentially affect the immediate neighbors. And, and we have little confidence that it will be done in a responsible fashion. The excavation for that, as was noted by other presenters, requires the removal of a beautiful catalpa tree, which their proposal misleadingly describes as a, an apple tree. And, and in fact, in many ways, I think the, the, it's a sort of reflection of, of kind of the relationship between the neighbors and the, the owners of the proposed property, the property of the proposed development, that you're seeing such a strong pushback to the proposal at this point. I think that's about all I have to say, Mr. Chair. I mean, I, I have actually sat through your previous presentations today, and I have to say, I've been very impressed by the way your committee has made its decisions, and I trust you'll approach this decision with an equal sense of openness to what you're hearing. And, and, and I do appreciate the seriousness with which you approach your, your responsibilities here.
Great, thank you very much, sir. Any questions of the speaker? Okay, thank you. You've spoken already, sir, right?
I just wondered if you could make another attempt to find those photos that I sent in the thing.
If they're in the package, sir, you can be assured that we have seen them in our review of your application.
Are they included?
No, I understand. But if it's, if it was submitted properly, we've all read it. So rest assured, we've seen your, your photos. Okay, if we can have Mr. Galbraith back.
Hello there. Lots to respond to. I might need more than five minutes.
Yes, I'll grant you a little bit of time, sir, if you need it.
Thank you. I will be quick and maybe just hit more of the highlights. So regarding the, the rear catolpa tree, our arborist has reviewed it and has confirmed that it is in poor condition. We've already started speaking with urban forestry, and tree issues can be dealt with through the requested condition to obtain a tree permit, the standard way that these are addressed. There were a number of comments regarding the, sort of the height and massing of the proposed building. I note that the height is permitted. This is an 11-meter zone, and we're promoting, proposing a, a building of that height. So there's no variance there. And while I understand that people may not like a 17-meter building depth above grade, that's what the zoning bylaw permits, and so it's allowed to be that. With regards to the side yard setbacks, again, we're looking to largely maintain what has existed on this property since it was first constructed. And this is the existing condition of pretty much all houses in the neighborhood, or certainly a significant number of them. Usually when I do these things, FSI is the most commonly approved variance in a neighborhood. In this case, it is side yard setback. The 98 Hogarth, for example, was mentioned by one of the neighbors. It had a variance approved for 0.29 meters on the side yard setback. Neighbors have been moving back and forth along the side wall for decades and generations without issue, and will can be able to continue to do so into the future. On the west side, it'll be even easier because there's an existing dormer bumpout that is not being retained. With regards to privacy, the, there are a couple of windows on the side walls that are not for primary spaces. And the, the location of those windows has been, has taken into account the location of windows on the abutting property so that there's no direct view, you know, across from each other, to preserve the privacy of, frankly, both sides of the lot line. With regards to being able to see into surrounding backyards or across a lane, that's the existing condition in dense urban neighborhoods. Rear walls have windows, and you can see into other people's backyards. That's kind of just the way it is in a, in a city. What else? I note that we did circulate letters to neighbors and invited people to reach out to me. Several did, and I provided a response to all questions that have been received. Again, we also did a backyard meeting with both abutting neighbors, and we, we answered all their questions as well. Definitely don't agree that this is an assault on the neighborhood. I thought that was maybe not correct. Let me see here. With regards to the garage, we're providing a one-meter rear yard setback, and it, the, the backyard, the rear of the garage complies with the zoning bylaw for that in term, including separation from the center line of the lane. So there, that provides sufficient snow storage or, or space according to the zoning bylaw. Let's see, or what else? This is not a historic house. It's not listed or designated.
Mr. Galbraith, the first two deputants suggested a deferral.
We are not seeking a deferral today.
Okay, thank you.
Again, this is, this, this size of house, this shape of house, this scale of house is one that the committee has seen, I don't know how many dozens of times, in neighborhoods in Toronto, and including this neighborhood, including, I worked on 17A Grandview on the street right behind this. It was approved for a 1.0 FSI. This is, this is kind of the size and shape of modern buildings in Toronto these days, and it is largely in accordance with the zoning bylaw. Again, most of these variances are, are side yard setbacks for canopies and stairs, things that don't really have, have impacts on neighboring properties. Where there could be impacts is things like the building depth above grade and the third floor, you know, the massing of the third floor. All of these are in keeping with the zoning bylaw and are anticipated as being, you know, how modern buildings are designed in Toronto. And this is entirely in keeping with that new tradition, let's call it. If there's anything that I've missed, I'm happy to address it. I think that's, I mean, those are, those are the big ones, I would say. But if there's specific things you'd like me to, to address, I'm happy to do so. Again, we, we've included the, sort of that third floor stepback of 1.4 meters from the rear wall that you see on, on, you know, modern buildings. And that helps reduce the massing of the, of the proposed building.
Panel, any questions? Mizilla, did you have a question?
Yes. Through you, Mr. Chair. I have a question regarding the third floor balcony on the back. So we had two neighbors on the east side of the property that, that had a concern about privacy. I've noticed that, so are you considering to put a new privacy screen on the third floor balcony on both sides, east and west side?
We are, if the committee would like to impose that as a condition, we are happy to do so. I, realistically, I don't think those actually achieve the goal of, of significantly improving privacy and overlook in general, but if the committee seeks to do so, we are happy to do so. I would note though that, sorry to interrupt, I would note that the city planning has requested a condition sort of substantially in accordance with the, the drawings, and the drawings don't currently show a privacy screen. So provided that there are no conflicts between those sort of two, I don't think there would be, but I would just note that. We're happy to provide one, though.
And then on the drawings, sorry, through you, Mr. Chair. Next question is that, on the drawing that you will see on the projector, for the deck, you also proposed a privacy screen to some extent. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's a trellis. Yep, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, if we don't have any other questions, we'll be taking this into committee. All right, who wants to start us off with some comments? Peter?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. And thanks to everyone for coming down and participating in, in this process. I think you're, we've, we've heard your comments. There, it's a long list of variances, but as, as has been established, a lot of them are cascading from these side yard setbacks, which are a continuation of, of what was there before, what was existing. I have a hard time saying no to this application because of the variances. I think a lot of the concerns that were raised, especially in terms of the massing at the back and the rear self-shared landscaping, are, are contemplated and permitted in the existing zoning. That massing is, is, is contemplated. And just because it doesn't exist necessarily in the neighborhood commonly, doesn't mean that, that that's not okay. The length being limited to the basement, I think, minimizes that impact, and the, the rear landscaping has been improved to be quite minimally below what is, what is required. So looking at the variances themselves, I find them minor, and I'll be supporting the application.
Okay. Anyone else? No one else has any comments? Mizilla, did you have a comment?
Through you, Mr. Chair. When I first see the application, my concern was variance number one and the, and the length or depth. And then applicant remove variance number one, which is, which is great. And then also, the building depth is only limited to basement, so that will take away from massing.
Okay, so from my perspective, I would agree with my colleagues. I understand, and as Peter says, thank you for, everyone for participating and sharing your views. A lot of the views were about, you know, character of the community and fitting in and that sort of thing, which we understand. But this committee looks at the variances and tries to determine whether they are minor or not, or inconsistent with what's going on in elsewhere in the committee, in the community. And as Peter points out, these are really quite minor. And the, it's basically almost as of right for length and height, and that's what the bylaw permits. And while it looks like it may go further, that is basically underground, and no one's going to be affected by that. So on the basis of the variances before us and the nature of, of the application, I'll be supporting it as well. So I'll look to someone. Phil, did you want to comment?
No, I was just going to move to approve it.
Okay.
I might, I agree with my colleagues, and this might be an unpopular opinion, but I might even go further and say, when I look at this proposal, it does fit in, in the neighborhood. And I, I don't see anything inconsistent with the built form of the neighborhood. For those reasons, I do view it as minor, and I would move to approve it, subject to the, as amended, and to the, there's a planning condition.
Right, it's tying it to...
And forestry condition number two.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The planning condition, it shows January date, but I think we should make that amendment to the revised plans that were submitted and date stamped received on May the 15th, 2025?
That's a very sensible suggestion by the Secretary Treasurer, so absolutely, I would, I would agree.
Ms. West was suggesting screening for the balcony?
I, I accept the submissions of the applicant that I, I don't know for a balcony of this size in that location, it's going to make much of a difference, so I...
I did notice on the floor plan, it's two small bedrooms, too, so it's not going to be heavily used, I don't think.
If it were a larger terrace, it'd have more of an issue.
Or off a family room or something.
Yeah.
Are you okay with that, Mizilla?
I understand, yeah.
Okay. All right. Motion by Mr. Gosh to approve this application, subject to the conditions he noted, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? That is approved unanimously. You have your approval.
Through you, Mr. Chair. At this time, we will break for one hour and resume at 4 o'clock with our 2:00 PM, what was supposed to be our 2:00 PM applications.
Right, thank you. Okay, guys, mics off?